Good evening, everyone. At Skooki School District seventy-three and a half, we respectfully acknowledge that we are on the lands of the Sioux, Ho-Chunk, and Winnebago, Miami, Potawatomi, Peoria, and Kekapu Nations. These nations were forcefully removed from their traditional territories and these lands continue to carry the stories of these nations and their struggles for survival and identity. As a public institution committed to building a foundation for learning, leadership, and life, and educating our students to be critical thinkers who want to make the world a better place, we have a particular obligation to recognize the peoples of these lands and the histories of disposition upon which our schools rest. As educators, we recognize that by being silent, we are complicit in the ongoing oppression of indigenous peoples as we take this first step in fulfilling our responsibility to critically look at colonial histories and their present-day implications as we pay respect to the keepers of the land and the land itself.
We received three FOIA requests. One on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, Illinois Retired Teachers Association. The topic was retiring staff. It was responded to. On January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, Jonathan Fag's topic was list of all remote learning equipment reported as missing, damaged, broken, stolen, or otherwise unavailable for use, and we responded to that document, that request. And then on January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, Julie Justin, databid.com, topic, companies who submitted bids and their base bid amount for twenty twenty-two renovations, and we responded to that one as well.
Item G, staff recognition. Open it up to the board.
I'll begin. I wanted to recognize the administrative staff at Middleton. A friend of mine, her child had brought to her attention that, or was concerned that the bathroom passes were gender-colored, and so her child had put together a petition and gotten everything ready, and I was, you know, hopefully, you know, hoping it would go well, and found out that unlike at many schools, the immediate reaction was, oh, of course, of course, we'll change that, which I thought spoke a great deal to both the citizenship and empowerment of our students. They felt that they had the right and it was their space to make change, and also the quick response of our admin to sensible policy change. So, thank you so much.
I'll go next. I just want to say I want to generally like recognize all of the teachers and staff and administration, and also the parents and the students. There's been so many changes within like the last week and a lot of feelings on both sides of conversations, but everybody's doing a great job, and in some ways, this school year, I think, in some ways is a little bit harder than last year, but you're doing such a wonderful job with the students, and it really shows in their learning and their happiness.
I'll go next. I also wanted to echo Kelly, just really say thank you to all the administrators and teachers and support staff. I'm sure you guys are really exhausted. I know it's been a really rough year for all of you, and I just really, your work and your hard work and dedication doesn't go unnoticed, so thank you so much for all you do every day. Just really appreciate that.
I'll just add that, you know, I know how difficult it was to operate without a nurse, and I know Principal Tamra and Vice Principal Lorenas were pitching in and making calls, and I want to give a shout out to all the teachers, and especially special ed teachers, who at this time are balancing in-person teaching, you know, e-learning, it's a lot to balance, and we know that, so we're really grateful for everything you do every day. We know how hard it is, we know you have families also, so thank you.
So, I wanted to recognize Ms. Nahas, if I'm pronouncing her name correctly, on publishing a book, which again is one of those wonderful things that happens in our districts that sometimes go unheard. But the other people that I wanted to acknowledge and say a special thank you to are the people who are standing outside and greeting our children every morning when it's ten degrees outside, and as I drive by them, they're braving the cold to make sure that the kids are getting into the buildings and out of the buildings safely. So, thank you for braving the cold for our kids and for really just taking that on.
I also echo all of the sentiments that have been shared about our administration, staff, and all teachers, but I wanted to give a special personal shout-out to Mr. Chow, who oversees robotics at Middleton, and in addition to that oversees actually a lot of the after-school department part of extracurriculars at Middleton, so by no means is that an easy feat, especially during the cold and with buses and with things that happen, dismissals during that time, so major shout-out to Mr. Chow.
Thanks, everyone. I will just add that I'd like to welcome our new Director of Buildings and Grounds, Edward Carrigan, so welcome to our district, as well as all the new staff, our new nursing staff as well, whose names I apologize I don't know how to write down. And I also just want to, I don't think, I don't think I said this last time, so a shout-out to the Social Justice Committee for their work around the MLK Day and the food drive, and all the folks who donated to the food drive, as well as the folks who stood out in the cold and collected all the food. It looked like it was really bountiful and really exciting, so thank you so much for that. Yeah, thank you. You remember yours now? Okay.
I think her name is Ruth, Communication. Is that Ruth?
I want to send a shout-out. I've been hearing so many positive things in the community about how appreciative people are about the communication, and I want to send a shout-out to Ruth. I know that she works really hard on that, and it's appreciative. There's been a lot of positive response about how communicative the district has been this year.
All right. So, we are now at item four, public hearing. I need a motion to adjourn to public hearing on the amended budget.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to the public hearing on the amended budget.
Second. Motion made by member Arias, seconded by member Jacob. The rule.
Member Emowala.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Member Wolfinger. Member Moy Wooten.
Yes.
Member Jacob.
Yes.
Member Arias.
Yes.
Motion to move to adjourn to the public hearing on the amended budget passes. I will now turn the meeting over to Sam, our, oh, I can't remember the acronym, CSBO.
Okay, I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight, board and all of our community members. I'm going to present on the budget, amended budget. Now, this is not the first time we've done this presentation, so I won't belabor you with like too, too much. I'll just kind of go through it, and if you have any questions at the end, I'm here to answer those. So, let's just get started here. All right, so it's really important that the Board of Education is fiscally responsible and that we have our budget accurate, and so that's what all of this is all about. Today, we're going to be, we approved the tentative amended budget at the last board meeting, and then at this budget, we're going to take action on approving the actual amended budget. So, that's the timeline up there. Now, this is just a comparison and trends, and this chart was included in the last presentation, and it was in your board packet last month, so I'll answer questions at that in the end. It's kind of a little hard to see up here, but essentially it just shows some of the position, net position changes. So, fiscal year twenty-one, in the actual audited budget, we had twenty million dollars in revenue and twenty-one million dollars in expenditures, and that was a difference of about half a million dollars. In the original budget, beginning of this year, fiscal year twenty-two, we projected twenty-five, a little bit over twenty-five million dollars in revenues, and a little bit over twenty-six million dollars in expenditures, so again, deficit there of a little bit over eight hundred thousand dollars. And in your original budget presentation, I think it was back in September when I first met everybody here, we talked about where that deficit came from, and that deficit came from the upcoming fiscal year twenty-two renovations. We'll blame the architect, but, so, now, in the amended budget, you guys want to know what has changed here, and so I'm projecting actually, instead of twenty-five million dollars in revenue, I'm projecting just a tiny bit over twenty-six million dollars in revenue, and that came from an increase in property taxes that were not abating this year due to the property tax relief grant, which we did not have for this year, and those weren't in the original budget. Also expenditures, I believe the expenditures are closer to twenty-eight million dollars, so that's closer to about one-point-two million deficit, surplus and deficit versus the eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand about in the original fiscal year twenty-two presented budget, and the difference there comes into play, one, I will say COVID, there's a lot of things that we didn't account for that we kind of knew in the beginning of the year we weren't going to have really good, strong handles on, but also there was an un, there was an unbudgeted, already pre-board-approved expenditure, and it was monies that were due to NTDSE for their renovations, and so that is now properly accounted for. So, this is just kind of a summary of those changes, which is what I just went over for everybody. And just kind of going over some of the very, the more detailed specifics behind those changes. I talked a little bit about COVID and some things that weren't budgeted, and this is a list of those, kind of the more important things. So, there were some salaries that were being charged to expired grants, like preschool grants, and there were some salaries that were being charged to grants, but there were too many people in those grants. So, we've already corrected all of that, and our grants are now in alignment with our practices, which was huge for us. There's been a couple new positions. We have a night shift custodian, we still haven't been able to hire, but he's within the budget, or she is within the budget. Also, we have some additional special education and EL teacher needs, and then we've had long-term substitute increases, which I didn't list up here. We have a new administrative assistant that we've added for CIA to help support us with our grants and with our grant expenditure reports and many other things as well. And then we also have a health clerk. We actually ended up with a medical assistant who's serving as the health, who's serving in health clerk capacity, but those are all positions that were not budgeted for originally. We have prior-year expenditures, so one of the things we're working on here in the district is closing out early in the year so that all of our expenditures that are expected to, things that were ordered are paid prior to June thirtieth, so that they will be paid in the current year, right, and then not in the next year. So, at the beginning of this year, we had quite a few outstanding debts from the last prior year that weren't budgeted for, and so those are now properly budgeted for. COVID-related, again, supplies and materials from the water bottles that the kids are using for the water, the drinking fountains, to the PPE that you see all over the district, and the cleaning and disinfecting supplies and materials. There's also been some purchase services around that, so we had to increase the number of cleaners that we had from our original contract, which, you know, was in effect last year, in order to support all those additional cleaning needs. Technology infrastructure, so we've added some funds to the technology budgets so that we could support infrastructure work, and then we talked about the NTDSE, unbudgeted capital repairs, stimulus, a little bit to the school economy, so let me explain that. We didn't give a ton of money to everybody, okay? What we did was make sure that there was enough funds in place for the basics. So, we had some budget lines, for example, we had some of our principals whose professional development budget line was zero. It's really hard to support the training for our leaders if their budget is zero. So, there were small increases in those areas, very nominal increases, and as well as there were some unbudgeted supervision and staffing needs, and so those budgets have been corrected to account for what we actually are spending. Also, the retro pay for the IFT that might take place coming up if negotiations end soon, and so we want to make sure that those are also allocated in our budget. Okay, and then moving right along, so there's been some work in the business office that we've done to really support this, and we talked about this last time, but basically it all falls around fighting for the best practices, so we know, we don't want to throw away the baby with the bathwater, so we know there's been some things that have been going right and that have been happening here in the district for some time. We don't want to remove those things, but we want to institute best practices that are current. So, we've been working really hard together as a team of administrators and as a team of business office support staff to make sure that those are all in place. So, our beginning fund balances are the same. There was a tiny adjustment, I think, from the first board presentation back in September on the budget, and that was because during the audit, we found that there was some funds in an activity account that needed to be moved, and so that would account for the tiny difference there. This was a quote I shared last time from Brian O'Keefe, who's Assistant Superintendent in School District two hundred, and he wrote this statement as part of the winter twenty-twenty School and Finance Update for IASBO, and basically what he's saying is that we all knew, business managers, we all knew with COVID that it was going to be really tough this year to budget accurately, so everybody's going to be amending, we just happened to be the first at the table. And I will say, one, accuracy was really important and transparency for us to be the first to the table, but also having the board approval and everything in place prior to any spending, so we don't want to just start spending things, right, unless you guys have approved that, so that was the purpose of it. Our revenues, you can see here, projecting about nineteen million in the ed fund, which is our largest, and our revenues by source, the most of our money comes from our local property taxes, with just about ten percent from the state and twenty-one percent from the federal government, which is up from prior years, and that's up due And our revenues by source, the most of our money comes from our local property taxes with just about 10% from the state and 21% from the federal government, which is up from prior years, and that's up due to our ESSER grants. I will add, we recently received an additional ESSER grant, so we received almost $5,000 by forming a consortium with some of our local school districts for homeless education, and I've been working with Mrs. Demay, and we're already spending that money, so that's another one. For our expenditures, most of our funds come out from the Ed Fund. Next in line is really our O&amp;M, and then followed by our debt. We talked about this, I think, in the first budget presentation, the original one, about 70% of our expenditures are going to come out of payroll. They're going to come out of our salaries and our benefits, and that's why it's really important that we're working to make sure that everything is in alignment. Okay, expenditures from the Ed Fund. As you can see, we don't, we do have more capital equipment, non-capitalized equipment in the O&amp;M Fund than most of our other funds, and that's just because of the nature of O&amp;M, right, mechanical stuff. And then, transportation is mostly services here. And then, expenditures by object, you can see, again, most of our money comes from salaries and benefits. And then, by fund here, or by function here, you can see that we spend about 60% of our expenditures on instruction and about 8.3% on student support services. And then, administration is, I think that's about 10%, was what my, I think it's a little bit higher. So, our original, this was the original, part of the original presentation in September, just looking at the budget and the surplus and deficit, and we talked about that earlier. And so, here's the actual surplus and deficit, just a little bit different. You can see right there in capital projects that that's at 1.1 million dollars. Ending fund balances, we're actually going to end in a decent place, we expect. And that's all I have for today. Any questions? Yes.
So, I remember when we were going over the ESSER grants, some, they were multi-year, is that correct?
That is correct. There's actually, we're on the third version, and this one is called the American Rescue Plan Act One, so this is ESSER three. We have actually, we were able to expend, originally, we hadn't expended anything in any of the grants, but we were able to expend and receive our payment for all of our ESSER one grant. So, we're currently working on our ESSER two grant, trying to get rid of as much of that for the things that we need as possible. And I've been working with Mr. Schwartz on kind of realigning those grants, ESSER two and ESSER three, so that we place the things that we might do next year or even the year after in ESSER three, and vice versa, kind of just cleaning it up a little bit.
So, in terms of the slide about revenues by source, I mean, typically, the federal one is like very small, so for the next, like next year's budget, we'll also see kind of, I know you can't tell me the exact percentage, but like a bigger pot pie than we typically see.
Yes. But I would like to kind of elaborate on that a little bit. So, not quite as big as this year. So, this year, we have in the budget ESSER two and ESSER three. I do fully believe we'll be able to expend all of our ESSER two grants and recover that money by the end of this year. And so, next year, we'll have ESSER three, which we will have spent some of, and so, it won't be quite as high. It will be higher than maybe in normal years, but it won't be quite as high as this year. We are, I am hoping for more money, though. And I, like talking with Mr. Schwartz, one of the things I pointed out is we, the importance of spending it and spending it as fast as possible because we have these expenses to allocate it to. So, we want to send a message to the federal government that we need more because we really do.
Okay, that was my main question. Does anybody else on the board have a question?
Yeah, I have two quick questions. Thank you so much, Samantha, Sam, for always highlighting this super clearly, and this is just a logistical question. So, the summary of changes slide.
Yes.
It talks about surplus slash deficit, which means different things.
Yes.
I read this the way that you would read an accounting balance statement, so the parentheses means like deficit, but I just want to make sure I'm interpreting it correctly. Is it a surplus or is it a deficit?
Yes, it is, and that's a good question. So, the ones in parentheses are deficits, and the ones, and I know that sounds because it's negative, and I know usually, we look at credits as like the positive. So, those are the deficits, the ones in parentheses, and they're over here on this side of the slide. And then, over here on the right side are the ones that are going to end up as surpluses, and you can see those without parentheses. So, the areas that we're going to have deficits in, we're going to have deficits in, you can't see it right there, but that's the capital improvements. I don't know if it's just cut out. And then, also in debt, debt services.
That makes a ton of sense. Thank you. I was specifically referring to slide five that has like the summary of it because all those numbers are in parentheses, and it was a little...
Let me go ahead and see if there's an error or something. There's all kinds of things that could have happened. Oops, I'm almost there, I swear.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, like those?
Yeah, so, so these are all deficits.
Got it. Okay.
Those are all deficits.
Okay, cool. That makes sense. Okay, so the parentheses does stand. Okay, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
And then, regarding the, I think it's like the following slide, it's like the business office work slide.
Yeah.
So, the one right after this. Yes, thank you. So, have these best practices impacted our budget from a numerical standpoint? Would you say it's been, allowed us to be better prepared for changes as it ebbs and flows? Because there's a lot of positive work that's highlighted on this slide, and I'd love for you to be able to articulate that a bit more just for the sake of like the fantastic work that's been done.
Absolutely. And so, you'll see, like, we maximize the current grants to align to our current needs, and that one definitely impacts our budget because we get away from waste, and we move towards more what we call academic and fiscal solvency, so that we're getting the best things for the best prices, and we're not losing any money. And so, those are the kind of things, you know, that's a specific example to answer your question. But in general, definitely, these practices have helped because we're able to now communicate with everybody and be transparent with like our administrators and all of the district office and building leaders, and that's going to help us as we prepare for budgeting because we're more aware of our staff needs, we're more aware of our actual numbers and expenses, where we're falling short, where we might have too much in place. And so, through all of these practices, those have, those things have been communicated more clearly and more accurately, and that definitely helps us with budgeting for this year, but more importantly, also for next year.
Amazing. Thank you so much, and fantastic work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Samantha, can I just ask a quick question about the capital expenditures?
Yeah.
Most specifically about the NTDSE that, the $1 million.
Yeah.
Was that supposed to have gone on last year's budget, or is it correct for it to have taken place?
It is correct for it to have taken place this year. So, I believe the board approved it last year, so NTSD had a proposal out, and there were two options. You could pay in full this year, or we could have made payments or prolonged it over a period of time, and the selection was made at the time that we would pay it all this year.
Great. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Again, appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
It's always riveting.
Thanks. Everybody feel the same? Riveting. Okay, great.
Any other questions for Samantha?
Samantha, it sounded like we were one of the first districts to amend our budget. I'm curious, maybe it's too early, but I'm curious what you're hearing from other district business offices and conversations about, I'm not surprised that, you know, we're a little bit more in the hole than we expected. You know, we have great needs. Suddenly, our schools are all turning into much more health centers than we realized, you know. So, what are other folks talking about, kind of like the future of our revenue needs?
Now, I talk about this, you know, all the time with different business managers from the area, and we exchange emails, we have monthly lunch, you know, breakfast that we get together for, and I talk to, I help and talk with business managers from other regions. So, I do have a really good finger, or finger on the pulse of the situation. So, what's being communicated is kind of what you would expect, that there's some serious staffing shortages and need for additional staff as it pertains to mental health, as it pertains to student special needs, and as it pertains to gaps in learning and trying to catch up students who have been out for COVID-related issues last year. There's also nationwide shortages on staffing. People don't want to work for nothing anymore. They don't want to come in and risk themselves cleaning your building even for almost less than minimum wage or minimum wage. There's just so many staffing shortages nationwide that are affecting schools right now, the need to raise rates so that we can get people in, into the right players in here at the right time. Also, supplies were really hard to budget for because we just didn't know how much or what we would need as it pertained to the COVID. So, it's really all focused around COVID, of course, as you, as you know, and it's all focused around those things that we just could not have guessed in the past, and hopefully, that's a good, that answers it.
Any conversations about what to do about revenue issues and the people?
Well, that's, that's a great question. So, so some of the things we've talked about is like recently, there was an additional PTAL that came out where we would get a refund from our community, and so, some discussions were being had about whether or not we would actually give that money back to our community and abate it, or whether we would take the money. We've decided to take the money. Niles Township 219, I think, decided not to, but they were the only school district in the area who did that that I'm aware of. And so, just where conversations were about, starting to be had about, we know there's going to be revenue issues going forward, we're deficit spending now, what is that going to look like? And so, those are just the initial conversations that have been being had. Uh, in this presentation? No. Yes, no, no. So, in the presentation, I discussed the property tax relief grant and the fact that we had not gotten that grant in the last fiscal year, which means that if we did not get it last fiscal year, we would not be abating those taxes, which was to be about a little bit over $800,000. And that was what I was referring to in the presentation. This is an additional one to kind of write everything because of all these property tax, you know, abatements that are going on. And so, these are additional funds that we are awarded. I think it's about $250,000, and I think I did talk about that in my last board presentation, so there's some more information in that board packet.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Anyone from the administration? Oh, yep.
From our fund balances. We do have healthy fund balances currently. Help, let's keep it that way. So, okay, is that all? Well, just in closing, I would like to say that coming to this amended budget, I think, is the best step that we could have taken as a district. It's really important for us to have accuracy in our spending, and it could not have been done without every single administrator and staff member in this room participating and just making sure that they, they did whatever was necessary to try to get to the right numbers. So, lots of work went into this. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Sam. I now need a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Second. Motion made by member Aria, seconded by member Moy Wooten.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger? Member Moy Wooten?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Aria?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion to adjourn public hearing passes. We will now call to order and reconvene regular session. Moving on to item 6A, fiscal year 22 renovations update. Sam? Okay.
My name is Aaron Weisner. I'm an architect at Green Associates, and we've been assisting Sam and Ed in the next phase of our toilet room renovations for Middleton. There was previous, when Meyer addition was, was built, there were some toilet rooms that were renovated here at Middleton. Then, the focus became McCracken, which was last year, and there were some toilet rooms that were renovated there as well. And this year, we are finishing the staff, I'm sorry, the student toilet rooms at Middleton. It's a total of six, three boys, three girls, student restrooms. And then, in addition, there is a large classroom, Classroom 169, that is being shrunk in order to bring it in line with all of the other classrooms in Middleton. And the room that we are shrinking that classroom, we are adding two staff toilets to address some staff toilet needs in the building. The other component is some fire alarm work. It is, there's really maintenance. There's also a little bit of electrical work, but the very large portion of this focuses on those toilet rooms. The renovation specifically is complete overhaul, all the finishes, the cracked terrazzo floors are being replaced, the wall finishes are new ceramic tile, all new toilet, toilets, all new sinks, and all new partitions, as well as the ceilings and lighting. As far as the bids that we received, per, are typical, we had a open bid, public reading of the bids, and the apparent low bidder was forced to withdraw their bid for some scope that they did not include. We evaluated the second lowest bidder, and they proved to have everything accounted for. We checked their references to make sure that they had done previous work successfully of a similar nature, similar kind, which they had, and ultimately, we recommended approval of Paul Borg Construction.
May I ask a couple questions?
Absolutely.
Great. I haven't met you, but I'm Nikki Tammer. I'm the principal, so thank you for the work that you're doing. I look forward to working with you in the future. I've been through this rodeo a couple times, and I'm just wondering, were you able to look at the, the rooms in general to try to see if you could re-figure them and make more stalls and more bathrooms? And then, my second question is, will they go down to the floor so that in the future, for our non-binary, our non-gender conforming students, that they could perceivably be used by anyone?
So, the answer to the first question is, there was some extra space in a lot of these toilet rooms. However, it ended up almost being a count for count because while we do these updates, we, we update the handicap stalls and we update the stall spacing in order to account for the current ADA compliance codes. So, the, the two sort of were a wash in most of your toilet rooms. So, there, other than the two staff toilets, which, which are an increase, the renovation really didn't increase the fixture count all that much. However, they're going to be, you know, more spacious, up to code, and definitely more modern fixtures. As far as the, the toilet partitions, you were asking if they go all the way down. They do not. That, that is not something that we've ever done or seen. There's always an 18-inch gap at the, the back, the bottom. What we do have is we have cleats and doors and hinges that do not allow sightlines to go through. So, the, for security, cleanliness, you know, the ability to get in and out of those stalls if someone were to lock the door, for, for all of those reasons, the, the standard is still to have them only come down to a certain distance off of the floor. But sightlines in are nonexistent, or as far as the new hardware is concerned.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up to clarify Nikki's question. So, does this mean that at Middleton, we are not going to have a gender-inclusive bathroom?
Right now, there is a, um, boys and girls. Now, as far as the code is concerned, there is no restrictions on you calling something a boy's toilet room, a girl's toilet room. It's all about the signage. You know, there, there is an intention in the design to essentially match where you have side-by-side boys and girls restrooms. We're, we're continuing that. The staff toilet rooms are obviously a single-user, you know, toilet sink, so those could be dedicated in any way that you see fit. But the code does not dictate. There are urinals, however, in what was designed to be a boy's versus a girl's toilet room.
I guess I thought when we were planning, I realize this, I feel like this is a late in the game question, but like we took, we made the effort at McCracken to make sure we had a gender-inclusive bathroom, and I guess I'm just wondering why we don't have one, and I apologize if I, as a board member, dropped the ball somewhere along the way on this topic, why we're, and this is obviously not your fault as the architect.
Sure.
So, I'm just, I guess, I'm just wondering, a question to the rest of the board, if we miss, like, I guess, I, my understanding was that there would be a gender-inclusive bathroom at Middleton. There absolutely is. And I agree with you. I feel like I'm coming in at the end of the game, too, and I'm probably going to frustrate some of my colleagues at district office. But having gone through this...
But having gone through this before in my previous district, I am wondering if we could just, before the construction starts, if we could rethink this, just because we do have such an inclusive community with so many students who are, you know, non-conforming and X, Y, and Z. Before we start, I'd like to really talk and think.
So I think I could speak to that a little bit. I think Erin kind of mentioned it. So Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of these plans were created in the prior year, right, to this year?
That's correct.
Because they were put on hold. So these are things that kind of predated even this board and myself. But I will say that I think it has a lot to do with the signage, and that I don't think necessarily changing the design of it is going to get us the gender-inclusive restroom. But I think we could do that within the plan that is existing. I think we could still make that happen, and there could still be steps that we could take to ensure that. So for example, if we had one of the restrooms just say that it was...
I would echo that, that right now, nothing has been built, and actually, nothing has been ordered. So including this would be very easy to do. The other thing I would say, and I apologize if I made it sound like it was not this way, but this is not all of the toilet rooms that you have in the school. This is the toilet rooms that are within this project being renovated. So you have some single-user toilets in other locations. I will defer to, you know, the administration as far as how you want to assign those, but I would say both of those things, that these renovations are six of your toilet rooms, not all of your toilet rooms, and that there's plenty of opportunity to make something a gender-inclusive toilet room. There's no reason why we couldn't do that.
Can I ask a legal question? Do we have a requirement to gender bathrooms, period?
Say again?
Do we have a requirement to gender-label bathrooms, period?
Not that I'm aware of, Dr. Hightower.
I don't know that we specifically have to do a gender-neutral bathroom, but I believe that we, is there not a mandate that we have to have at least one single bathroom?
I think I'm sort of saying the opposite. At this point, I think that how the younger generation views gender is entirely different than how adults do, and so ultimately, especially in this community, I mean, to me, you have a bathroom, and then you have a bathroom with urinals, and people pee where they need to pee. So I guess my question is, do we have a legal requirement that we have to put a sign up that says, "Boys' bathroom and girls' bathroom," or can it just say, "Bathroom with urinals, bathroom without urinals"?
I don't know that we have a legal requirement to say, yes, this is a boys' only or a girls' only bathroom, and then we have the gender-neutral bathrooms. I will say that, and again, my apologies, because this was pre-planned a year ago as far as what should have happened as far as the bathrooms, but I am aware that they are now making bathrooms where all of the toilets have closets, and the sink is in the middle of the room, or like right outside the room, or something like that. So there are other designs that are now happening for washrooms. Again, these, though, were planned when we did McCracken last summer, Middleton was supposed to be done last summer as well.
I'd like to also say that our locker rooms need to be updated. That needs to happen in the near future, and those locker rooms should be topped to the ceiling to the floor in terms of those changing rooms available for all students for that same very reason. So I know that that needs to be updated in the near future, and I do see bathrooms in, you know, just recently renovated schools that have the bathrooms in sort of a central location. There's no gender identification, and then you have that middle sink area, and they're individual bathrooms.
All right, I have a question. This might make me public enemy number one. Teachers, please forgive me. The two bathrooms that are being created are going to be single-service bathrooms, right?
That's correct.
But they're only, but only faculty would be allowed to use them?
So Ms. Nelson, currently, our only staff bathrooms are down on the first floor, all the way down by the gym. And so picture being a fifth-grade teacher on the whole other end of the building. Currently, if they have to use the restroom, either in an emergency or not in an emergency, they have to go across the building. So we have something put in place right now where we have blue lanyards and staff lanyards, because we're not supposed to be in the restroom for student privacy and safety, and for the privacy and safety of our adults at the same time. So if there's a student in the bathroom or restroom, and their lanyard is out there, the staff member has to wait, and vice versa. And so it just really isn't logistically possible. Well, I mean, obviously, we're making it work, but that's why they're building two more staff bathrooms.
So I guess my question is, they'll be single-use, so couldn't they still serve the purpose of if a student was feeling uncomfortable in one of the bathrooms, it would still be accessible to them? Like, are students going to get penalized if they go into these single-use bathrooms?
No, that's how we have it working downstairs. But just where I see us going, in my last district, our bathroom doors did go almost to the floor, and there was a locking mechanism that was safe for everyone, so that anybody, and the urinals were partitioned off, and they were in both bathrooms, and they were all gender-neutral. So I'm just wondering if we want to visit this one more time.
Thank you. Oh, wait, I have another structural question. Our building's pretty old, correct?
That's correct.
Are we, do we have any asbestos concerns?
So you do, and that is typical, and there's already plans in place where everything that is being worked on as of this year will have an environmental consultant abate that asbestos.
Thank you.
Last question, I hope it's the last question, but what is the time period that you're expecting construction to happen, and are there plans to minimize disruption to all of the staff and the students?
Yeah, this will happen over the summer. The substantial completion date is just before teachers come back, and as far as disruption, there will be toilet rooms still operational within the building. So staff will potentially not be able to use the closest one, because it will be under renovation, but the front office staff that is potentially still going to be in the building will have facilities to use.
So my question is, like, what's, clearly, there's a few conversations that need to happen, like, what's our drop-dead timeline for construction to begin that we need to, like, have these conversations and get back to?
No, absolutely. So with the award of the project to Paul Board Construction, they will begin giving us submittals. Those submittals will be approved, and products will start to be ordered. There is still, I think, two or three weeks, and it isn't necessarily a specific date where everything comes in. So it really depends on what you need to change. If something needs to change, and it's just signage, that's literally the last thing. It could be changed at any point in time. If different fixtures need to be ordered, then we would need to start making those changes in the next two, three weeks in order to, again, none of that would be undoable, but then, at that point, if you order something, and then you have to start sending it back to order something else, there's small costs that start to incur.
I have one more question, and do you want to ask your question? Go ahead.
Does the change in reconfiguration change the scope of the project, which then makes the bidding process invalid?
Based on the comments that you've just made, I would say no. If we start to go to an entirely different arrangement, you know, knocking down walls that we're not currently planning on knocking down, putting entire areas into some sort of central bathroom, then obviously, we're in a completely different scope. If we're talking about toilet partitions that now go all the way down, that's easily accomplished, would not need to be rebid. And even if we talk about urinals that are not urinals now, they're toilets, again, that's something I think can easily be accommodated. Yeah.
So I'll just, for those of you watching, we're streaming this live, right? Yep. So this is a good reason for our finance committee to form, because if we'd had a finance committee, probably, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now. So if you're interested, please submit your application. You got a thing in the mail. My second, that's my comment. My question is, is the contractor that we are voting on, do we know if the contractor is a union contractor or not?
There is no requirement for union labor. There is prevailing wage requirement on all of these projects. A lot of times, they do use union labor, because, for whatever reason, but there is no requirement. And again, that's typical across the board, that prevailing wage is the rule.
Right, I know that, but my question was, if we know if this contractor is using union labor or not?
The, I will have to get back to you. I know for a fact that the plumbers are going to be union. There are certain other trades that are going to be union. So, yes, there will be union labor on your project, but I don't have a line-by-line accounting of which of their trades are union and which aren't.
Yeah, it'd be great, just so we know. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Do we have any other questions from the board?
I have a quick question. Do you foresee, and you may not be able to answer this, but do you foresee any supply chain issues with this project? And if so, do we need to kind of get on the ball right away to make this start happening?
So the short answer is, yes, there are lots of supply chain issues this year, but the good news is that because of that, we bid when we bid, and everything is, so, no, I don't anticipate any on this project, but yes, there are a lot, and we've accelerated what would be our standard out-to-bid date, acceptance date, in order to account for that. The other thing I can say is that we watch this heavily, and, you know, nobody has a crystal ball, but the specific products that you're using in this renovation are not on the list of, you know, worst-case scenario as far as lead time, supply chain issues. Most of this will be locally available.
To kind of follow up on that, should we run into a supply chain issue and can't finish on time, do we have a Plan B? Will we be able to open, and will we be able to function in August when we come back, even with construction?
I hope it's not bravado to say that that isn't an option. Not finishing is not an option. There are plenty of time between now and then to see issues a mile out, understand that we may need to make a substitution. In fact, we did that literally last year with some toilet partitions. We moved to a different toilet partition manufacturer because a mile away, we understood that there was going to be some lead time issues. So there are options there. The contractor has liquidated damages in place, so they have a financial motivation to keep that date, and they, in practice, will bring everything they need to bear in order to open on time.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. All right, moving on to information, item B, Strategic Plan Presentation, Learning Environment. Good evening, everyone. This presentation will be on behalf of the Learning Environment District Leadership Team. Our members include Priya Amin, Sarah Kinsella, Hannah Seibert, Asma Ahmad, Laura Williams, and myself. Sarah Kinsella was not able to be here this evening, but big thanks to the rest of our committee for being able to make it out this evening. We are going to talk a little bit about the purpose of this district leadership committee. We'll also talk about how it is tied to the strategic plan, as well as what has happened in the past, and where we are going in the future. So our purpose, the purpose of the Learning Environment DLT Subcommittee is to continue to foster a safe, supportive, and stimulating learning environment that encourages all of our students and staff to work collaboratively and creatively, to live, learn, and lead in a rapidly changing and diverse global society.
So the Learning Environment Committee has four plan objectives that come from the strategic plan, and just a quick reminder, oh, wait, do I have to push this too? No, thank you. You're my Vanna White, thank you. The first one is to engage staff, families, caregivers, and the community in education focused on digital citizenship and student use of technology. Oh, I can do that, okay. Actively manage a facilities plan that is innovative and supports safety, district technology, open learning, creativity, and diversity. Create learning environments that support collaboration and communication in a technological world, and provide transformative learning experiences by creating an engaging, hands-on classroom environment. So those are our overarching objectives.
So how did we get to the place that we are today? During the 2019, 2020 school year, which is definitely a school year I know most of us will always remember, the Learning Environment was working hard at accomplishing goals that were related to our district strategic plan. And those goals were also related to district technology upgrades. So that first upgrade was a second-grade iPad data collection, which was looking towards gaining information about the use of iPads in the classroom. So in second grade before this year, there was five students to one iPad, and from that data collection, it was gathered that switching to a one iPad per one student was going to promote more student success in the classroom. A second goal that was completed was the fifth and sixth-grade classroom displays. Some of those smart boards that were being used in the classrooms were a little bit outdated and not working as well as they should. So those were replaced with ViewSonic Smartboards, which is just a different brand from the smartboard brand smartboards that you do see in a lot of the classrooms in our district. And then lastly, a goal that was completed was refreshing the McCracken Chromebooks. The district was able to purchase 120 Chromebooks to replace Chromebooks that were outdated or just not working as they should have been. So all three of those goals were completed during the 2019, 2020 school year, and I'm going to pass it so that you can hear more about the goals that we are still working on and hope to accomplish within the next two years.
So for the classroom equipment and design portion, we had two major projects. That's, I'm going to go into more detail on that, so sorry if it's lengthy. But for the McCracken furniture project, we're trying to get new furniture at McCracken, hopefully, one day. And in the 2018, 2019 school year, we did a lot of stuff. We did a lot of research on what makes an effective learning space. We, the Learning Environment Committee then toured the classrooms at Middleton to see what kind of furniture they had, because at the time, they had the newest furniture. Then we had an in-service at McCracken with the teachers, where we provided them with the research that we had. And then the McCracken teachers went on tour in McCracken to see what different learning spaces look like here, so that they could be inspired for the most effective learning space within their classrooms. We worked together as teachers at McCracken to come up with a shared vision for what our effective learning spaces would look like. And then the Learning Environment Committee went on two site visits to local middle schools so we could see what their furniture looked like, and also see how they were using other spaces which might not traditionally be considered learning environment, or like learning spaces, like hallways, common areas, like plant walls, all of that. Using all that information, we were able to then order, or work with the business office, to order a variety of furniture and put that into our health room here at McCracken as a pilot room, where teachers then went in and taught classes with a full classroom. And then afterwards, teachers and students were able to provide the Learning Environment Committee with information about which pieces of furniture worked and which didn't. We also had it open to the community where parents were able to come in and look at that room during one of our, during the February conference time. Using that information, the Learning Environment Committee was able to determine three separate categories of type of classrooms that we would have at McCracken in terms of flexible furniture. We'd have like low seating, a hybrid room, and a different room with more like individual workspaces. And the plan was to then have our teachers here choose which classroom, like, learning space would work best for them, order that in the spring of 2020, have that come in in the summer of 2020. Obviously, we weren't able to do that because of COVID. But we were able to get carpet tiles installed at McCracken so that we are prepared for flexible furniture in the future. And then in terms of the maker space at Meyer and Middleton, that is still ongoing. We're working with the business office on that, and I'm going to hand it off to her, so you can security.
So as you can hear, the theme of the night is then COVID happened. So as far as safety and security, and in connection to the goals of our committee, it was difficult to accomplish much seeing that schools were closed last year. However, we do meet, as far as our student handbook and safety procedures go, we do meet every year at the end of the year. There's a committee formed between teachers, parents, and administration. And we review our handbook yearly before it's published to our families. Additionally, our fire chief and police head of the Skokie Police, we meet at the end of the year as well. We review our procedures as far as drills go and what improvements we can make. And last year, because so many things were remote, we were actually doing drills almost every week when we came back. But it was really interesting because a number of our drills had to be performed remotely. Like, for example, we can't huddle in a corner because of social distancing and things like that. So we actually improvised and were able to create like slides and images and things like that so that we could still pass on the information without actually doing the act. So, and that's a lot of other schools in the area. We're doing the same thing. But we'll talk about what's ahead. So sorry. All right. So these are some of the plans with safety and security coming up. So we do want to review these procedures. As far as drill procedures, like I just explained, they've changed. We would really like to work with the business office and our district admin team to consider a safety audit where there's an outside vendor that can actually do an audit of our buildings and recommend if there are better measures that we can take, whether it's with our doors, our windows, anything like that as far as safety goes. As I explained, we already have a partnership with the Skokie Police and Fire Departments. We hope that we can partner with the Delt and Whole Child Committee because the learning environment is not just about physical safety, it's also about emotional safety. It's really important that our children see themselves in the environments in our buildings. So whether that's in the classroom, in the hallways, again, the physical environment, but also making sure that they feel safe, both emotionally and physically at school.
And I'm going to talk a little bit about the digital citizenship plans for this year and into the future. Because we have our technology needs really, for the most part, met in the classroom at this point, we're really going to be focusing on the digital citizenship curriculum, which, you know, moves faster than the speed of light. From year to year, what we need to do and what we need to have our children understand is changing so rapidly. So we're evaluating our current resources. We're working cross-grade level within the schools to look for gaps, things that, you know, haven't been covered or haven't been covered to the degree that we want them to be. And looking for possibly new curriculum options. We also will be able to align our SEL units using the new Panorama platform that we've adopted, which will give us a lot more detailed information about where our students are and what their SEL needs may be. And then McCracken sort of gives a little bit of a challenge with the scheduling because whereas at Middleton and Meyer, you can say, "We're going to do this lesson today." At McCracken, you have to really plan for, we can't just do it in the morning in social studies and make sure everybody gets the lesson at the same time. So there's a lot of moving parts at the middle school. And so we have to work together and plan extended advisories to make sure that everybody is getting those lessons in a timely fashion.
So we're going to continue working on our two major projects, especially the McCracken furniture project. Very, very much needed. Thus far, we've already gone through the furniture that was selected back in 2019 and 2020 to see what is still available and what's no longer available. So based on that, we've been working with the business office to find new vendors because a lot of, now I shouldn't say a lot, but a significant amount of the furniture that the teachers wanted is no longer available. Going forward, we are going to have to reintroduce the McCracken furniture project to staff, just as like a little refresher, and then get some staff feedback. Maybe not to the extent that we got it last time, just because the majority of the staff here is still the same as 2019, 2020. And possibly doing some site visits in the future. But as I said, we are working with the business office on vendors. And the money which was allocated for this project in 2019 and 2020, I'm being told, is still being held so that it's not allocated for another project in the future. And obviously, going to continue working on the maker spaces at Meyer and Middleton.
The last thing that we have been looking at is our professional development within the committee. We have IdeaCon 2022 coming up shortly in February. And so two of us out of our team will be attending that. I also have a digital pass so that we can look through all possible resources that have to do with digital citizenship so that we can make sure that we're making a very informed decision about what would best meet the needs of our students with regards to digital citizenship, but also exposing us to new things that we might learn at that conference. So these sessions are going to focus on media literacy, digital citizenship, encouraging students to tell their own story through identity and amplifying their voice. And each of them is a technology-centered session. And they're going to give us ideas and resources for being able to integrate media literacy, digital citizenship, and ideas and tools to ensure that all of our students are getting what they need. Any questions?
I have one question. I love the statement, "And then COVID happened." Because something that sticks in the back of my mind is, however, have our needs changed because COVID happened? And so as we're evaluating what kind of furniture and things of that sort that we want, we may not have an answer for that today. I don't expect an answer for that today. But is it going to impact our decisions going forward? Because I would hate to see us buy something that we thought we wanted in 2018 that may not necessarily work as well for us as we live in a post-COVID world.
Do you mind if I just chime in here, just a little bit about the decisions that needed to be made about the furniture? Because we did meet and discuss, like, what does that look like? And what furniture did we need to order? And what furniture could we wait and get more feedback? And also make decisions about social distancing. We have no idea what guidelines are going to be in place for the upcoming school year. And just like, you know, Ms. Wolfinger broke up, brought up about the supply chain, you know, difficulty right now, that is also going to play in. And we want to make sure that we have, we have to like empty the entire school of the furniture. We have to then donate it or sell it. And then we definitely need to then make sure we have all the furniture in the classrooms before it opens. So due to that, we're really going to focus on what areas we can replace that need to be replaced immediately. Like, I can just tell you, the choir room, that furniture needs to get replaced, and it is individual, so it will allow for social distancing. So those things we have to keep in mind. I do hope that we're not doing this for the next two years, but I know that next year is sort of unknown.
And just to piggyback off of that, I also think that it'll be important when we're sharing those suggestions for classroom setups with teachers to give them the time to think that through. A teacher who may have wanted all flexible seating with students to be able to share benches in 2018 may feel differently today. And maybe they have also changed some of their practice around what that can look like. And so allowing for that time to really think about what their classrooms can look like, look at the resources available, and think outside the box for how to allow for flexible seating, but also make sure that all of the students are being safe is going to be really important. And so that's going to have to be a part of the new rollout plan when it's reintroduced to staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, all of you, Priya, Hannah, Asma, Laura, Allison, and Sarah, in our hearts, for this fantastic presentation, all the hard work that's gone into this. I love a good succinct presentation with extra words on the side, you know, note-taking. It was good. The quick question that I have to start off is the purpose slide. Did you all draft that purpose statement on your own? And is that like the guiding principle for the Subcommittee? Or where did that come? Because it obviously looks very familiar, and I know we've dissected this from our, in our board trainings as well. So I'm just curious if it's just pulled from there, because I have a, like, suggestion about it.
So this purpose is the same purpose that was used previously for the committee. We did look at it at the start of our work together this year and decided that we did want to keep this purpose because so many of the projects were ongoing and hadn't been completed, and we felt like they led right into our purpose. But always open for suggestions.
Awesome. Makes a ton of sense, logic and rationale. Love it. One thing that I would just recommend and/or idea that I would bring forth, innovation is the center of all of these projects. And I would love to see that word incorporated here, both technology-wise, innovation with furniture and all of that. So I just think to ground, perhaps for next year or something, wanted to make that on-the-record suggestion for the committee to come. So thank you for your openness to that. The second question about the, so it seems like just this furniture conversation, in terms of timeline, it sounds like we're back on square one, and that's what the bottleneck is just due to COVID. Am I understanding that correctly?
So some of that would take us back to square one as far as reintroducing it to staff, making sure that we have available furniture, because many of those were not available any longer. But some of those things, I think, have already been accomplished. Doing the research, finding out what best meets the needs of our students, allowing teachers to participate in that decision-making process. All of those things still stand, and I think that that was really the foundation of these decisions. Some of the things that will need to change might be, what does the furniture look like? We had a lot of different patterns involved previously, but the new carpet has a lot of patterns as well. So teachers may not want it to look like that. And I think that those details are secondary to the overall goal of the furniture project, which I think will stay intact.
Fantastic. That's awesome. And I'm glad to hear that, that, you know, we're not on square one, we're on square two, you know? Okay. That's great. And then the last question might be directed towards Angela, actually, but anyone feel free to chime in, about digital citizenship. So I believe we talked about the service that would be provided by the state, where you can like report any incidents or altercations and things like that. So did we move forward with that? Or is that being taken into account and consideration with our digital citizenship curriculum?
Sorry, do you mean the new IWAAS reporting system?
Yeah, we presented on it. I believe that's what it's called. Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Okay. I don't know that there's a lot of overlap between that particularly and the digital citizenship. There is a lot of overlap between the castle competencies and digital citizenship. So we can use what we've learned from the Panorama survey in order to kind of inform, like, this is our baseline in terms of all competencies, but especially looking through that lens of digital citizenship in order to kind of move our students forward. Allison and I have had a lot of conversations about, you know, how do we use what we know? And how can we partner between the two committees? And we definitely have plans for the future, and we'll talk about that in terms of how we're going to combine our expertise areas in order to really facilitate that student engagement and growth.
Fantastic. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, Angela, but thank you. That was amazing. And I just wanted to ensure that that collaboration and no one's like reinventing the wheel and like all of our bases are covered. So that's great. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Just one, I like, I love that you said under safety and security, the possible partnership with Delt and the Whole Child Committee. I think it ties, you know, obviously, the conversation about bathrooms, I think, is an obvious connector. And acknowledging that safety goes beyond just physical safety to emotional safety as well. So, you know, it's this possible partnership. I just, you know, thumbs up to say, keep it up with that work as well. It's great.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. It was great. I do have a couple of suggestions. As far as the handbook goes, I love that you're reviewing this over a year. It did come up a few board meetings ago that we do have some gendered language in there. So I'm wondering if we can really pay attention to that and kind of change some of the wording in there. And I also, you know, thinking about what Ms. Tamaru said a couple of meetings ago and kind of tying it in with the safety and security and the windows not opening in some of the buildings. And I do really encourage, you know, kind of all of us to start thinking about, you know, really doing an audit or really doing, taking a good look at this. Because if a principal's telling you that they're concerned, there's definitely a concern. So I do love that idea, and I appreciate you bringing it up.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question about the furniture. It's a hot topic tonight. Did you say the money was already allocated? Is it, that's still in the budget? It's like holding a spot?
Yeah, so the allocation was originally a little bit over half million dollars, and it was within the tech budget. I've moved it from within the tech budget just so it doesn't feel like it's there when it's, you know, and it's spent on something else. And what we did was we placed it in the operations and maintenance, buildings and ground budget, so the money is reserved. And again, it's a little bit over half a million dollars. So I think it's really wise to think about that as like an investment and to take our time so that everything is exactly how we like it. But the money is reserved, and it will continue to be reserved.
Thank you, Samantha. So I'll just, I was whispering with Kelly. So, you know, we are at the point where we're going to, next year, we are going to be meeting to do the new strategic plan. So I know that, like, you know, the opening slides are pulled, right, from the previous strategic plan. And so in terms of just thinking about, like, next steps and then also ideas to bring to the next strategic planning session, I think would be really good for the committee to think about. You know, I mean, I think, obviously, the furniture and this kind of stuff has like been out there and needed, needs to happen, clearly. But also thinking about, like, you know, digital citizenship and safety and security and what that's going to look like in the conversations we'll be having as part of the strategic planning sessions, I think will be, you know, I just sort of, I think as we're getting all of these strategic plan reports, we just need to remember that next year is like our new strategic planning session and thinking about just what we've accomplished and kind of what our hopes and dreams are for the future. And what that would, you know, what the ideal would look like. Yeah.
What are the things I'm really hoping for, for the digital citizenship? My gosh. And I'm the speech pathologist. The digital citizenship portion is more PD for staff. I don't feel like our staff fully understands everything that's involved in that. So that's what my hope is for the future. You're young at heart.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's exactly those kinds of ideas. So, I mean, obviously, there, it's a multi-step plan to even prepare to getting to the point where we're having the strategic planning sessions. But yeah, making sure that everybody's voice and all the different committees are being heard and all those ideas are being put forth, I think, is going to be really important so that, you know, we don't end up at the end of next year going, "Wait a minute, this isn't at all what we wanted," or "This looks totally different," or, you know, those kinds of things. So thank you so much for your, for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also, very nice PowerPoint, very easy to read. Thank you. Okay, so item 6C, our March meeting, we will be doing a whole child strategic plan presentation. So we look forward to that. And so moving on, we will have the superintendent update, item D.
Both of my pieces of information for January unfortunately are all around COVID. One being that I am very excited that we're able to start the test to stay and the five-day quarantine, which will increase our children's in-school time and limit how much time they have to quarantine. I thank the parents for their patience while we got the right medical team in our buildings in order to pull this off at every school. And thank you as well to our administrators who figured out how we would house and support our children for lunch and things of that nature. So we needed to wait and actually have a true plan that would be succinct across time and not just try to Band-Aid something just to meet an expectation. So I do thank everyone for your hard work as far as pulling this off. And just to not belabor the point of what happened this weekend, but just to acknowledge that there was a temporary restraining order on some districts who filed a lawsuit in reference to wearing masks. We will continue to wear masks in our district. This is a mitigation factor that makes our children safe. It takes care of our teachers. And it also allows our parents to be able to go to work because we're minimizing the number of illnesses within our district. And the most important thing we can do is keep our children and our family and our community safe and healthy. So I thank everyone for your support this weekend when it came to the decisions that were happening across our state.
Any questions for Dr. Hightower?
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item E, suspension report. There were none, so we can move on? Okay. Administrators' update, item. Do we just want, you want to go first, Helen?
Sure, no problem.
Okay, so for January, we were transitioning back to school from winter break. And we're very busy with COVID cases. But we've made it through, I believe, the worst. We started out with access testing for our multilingual students to learn more about their proficiency in English. Our Meyer parent leaders met virtually and are starting to plan a family, a virtual family trivia night. So they're now collecting family appropriate questions for that. And then we also celebrated World Read Allowed Day. And then just a big shout out to Amy Kelly and Tori Gomery for coordinating the whole effort where we had McCracken students from the Social Justice Club read aloud to our students via Zoom during our library classes. Also, I forgot to, to include in my report that we did start our winter after-school enrichment program. And Mrs. Douglas, one of our kindergarten teachers, is spearheading that as the coordinator, and it's been going great. We have a cooking class, an icing class, and a dance class right now.
How many kids are doing the after-school, the enrichments?
We have about 10 students per class. We did cap it for spacing reasons.
That's awesome. Any other questions right after that?
Just a quick question. At Meyer, do we have financial assistance for any families that can't for the enrichment programs?
We do have some assistance for that. We had worked out with some of the vendors, some scholarship spots for that.
Thank you very much. Moving on, you want to go next, Nikki?
I didn't have enrichment as a part of my report, but I will inform you that we do have over a third of our students participating again. And so it's very exciting. And thank you to Mr. Cho again for leading that and organizing it. SOAR, so we had over 112 students express interest in our club, our Social Justice Club. And so we're super excited about it. We start tomorrow. Tomorrow is our first meeting. And we have created a distribution list for our parents so that the students in the club, the parents are going to get an update of what we talked about. Because sometimes this can raise big feelings, big ideas. Just, yeah. So it just might be some, some opportunities in the classroom and at home where parents or teachers might be like, where did that come from? So we wanted you to know what we're talking about. We wanted the teachers to know what we're talking about. So we're going to send that out tomorrow. But we have, myself and Allison are leading fourth and fifth grade. We have Mrs. Domingo, Mr. Walsh, leading second and third grade. And then we have Mrs. Chambers. Allison, help me out. We have Christine Paulson. And then also Abby Ricker Harris, a fifth-grade teacher, leading first grade. Because we had an overwhelming response from the younger grades, probably because Mrs. Domingo and Mr. Walsh are second-grade teachers. So we're very excited about it tomorrow. We're talking about Say Something. We're going to read the book called Say Something. They're going to take an interest inventory. And then we'll update you next month. So we're excited to get that going. I know I've been talking about it for multiple months. It takes a while to get these things organized, especially with such a large overwhelmingly positive response. But we are excited about it. We do have a new nurse and a new nurse's assistant. So I did want to thank the administration and the Board of Education for your support while we were finding a new nurse, but also for the extra position of Johnny Hayes, our medical assistant. She's been amazing in helping us in multiple ways, just to get the Middleton Nurses Office organized, get the files figured out and all that. And I know she's been a great help to the other buildings as well. So she's been great, so thank you. We've, we're having a lot of fun in the snow, and it's not going anywhere anytime soon. So we've been talking about what are the expectations with the snow outside? The snow doesn't belong to anyone. How can you build? No, it's a thing, trust me. How can you build and create in the snow? How can you socialize and experiment in the snow? But how can you not get into altercations in the snow? So our MTSS leadership team is awesome, and they're highly collaborative. And this year, our focus was our indoor expectations for when we can't be outside before school. When we come inside, how do we properly put our things in our locker? How do we properly remain in our space? How do we have proper conversations with students that are close to us? Things like that. And then for our Safety Patrol and Student Council, they're really stepping up big time to work with our first-grade students. They're taking an active role during, you know, in the morning to help them put their winter gear away, at lunch, to help them put their winter gear away, and then socializing. And they, the fifth graders are really excited about it. But it's also very, very exciting to see them take that leadership role. And for our little first graders to see them as leaders and, because that's what we're about, right? We're about making our students be productive citizens. So, thank you.
I just want to say I'm super excited about the Social Justice Club. You know, we, we put it in our resolution in the summer of 2020 and as a, as an ask for Middleton. And it's just really great to see it coming to fruition. And I think seeing how many students want to be involved is really revealing how excited they are and open. So thank you so much for making it happen. And thank you to all the teachers who are contributing, you know, their time and, and creative ideas to, to making it happen. So thank you.
I just have one quick question. When does it meet? Does it meet like during the school day or after school, like?
Yeah, just because there are so many things happening after school and with busing and things like that, we are meeting during the lunch hour. So we've reconfigured the lunch hour for our fourth-grade students to eat at a different time than they normally do so that they can be a part of the club and then eat with our fifth-grade students.
Okay, Nancy?
I also want to say that snow discussions continue into middle school? Probably high school. And I did not have this on my update, but I also think that we are spending a little bit more time inside. And so we've had to really have some discussions and look for ways to have our students in the gym. You know, social distancing is difficult. So I really want to shout out to Ms. Amin and also our support staff for really looking for additional games and things to occupy the students in a positive way. Because usually when they get into the gym, they just want to play tag still. So, so it's really been, you know, some problem solving has gone into that. And we also did start Gaga Ball inside, and that's been really popular. And we're looking for ways to fund an outdoor Gaga court.
Pit.
So we're, pit?
Gaga pit.
Yes, Gaga pit. So we're really looking forward to that. And then, so, I mean, look forward to that. So I'm hoping that we can make something work for recess when we move back outdoors. So I also wanted to shout out for our World Read Allowed Day, which Dr. Way talked about. And that is really an annual event. And our librarian, Tori Gomery, partners with the Meyer librarian, Amy Kelly, and our Social Justice Club to really just share reading with our youngest students. And this year, obviously, we had to reimagine it. And Tori is unbelievably innovative and creative. And she has a makeshift broadcast booth that is set up in our library where we have three grade levels participating. And they really focused on choosing positive stories of diversity, inclusion, and activism. And those are the books that they focused on reading. And so that, it's actually going on for two weeks. And they're scheduled to do it. So we're really thankful to partner with Meyer for that. I also want to highlight our Buzzbot Robotics Competition. So we, you know, left in 2020, or really 2019, having our last competition. So we definitely took a serious hiatus from that. But thank you to Dr. Acevedo and also to Lisa Rep for helping organize and facilitate that competition in our group. We have over 30 students enrolled. And there were six individual teams, sixth through eighth grade. That happened on February 1st. There were six schools participating. And two of our McCracken Robotics Team placed in the top eight during the tournament. So we're really excited about the future and just continuing to foster that competition and that robotics program. So thank you for all of the help. And then our, our parent-teacher conferences, which are virtual, are coming up on Thursday, February 17th and Friday, February 18th. Registration is going on right now. And I also wanted to highlight, we talked a little bit about the Niles Food Pantry Donation Event. Special thanks to Tori Gomery, Laura Williams, Sally Elverado, and members of the Social Justice Club. And also our families who came out in the cold to drop off many, many donations. So we were able to donate a large supply to the Niles Food Pantry. So thank you so much for that.
Any questions?
I just want to say that reading all of these updates was just incredible and so exciting to see the fruits of your labor and, and to just see what you all are accomplishing despite such incredibly challenging circumstances. So, you know, everything that you're doing, from like helping the kids to continue being excited to explore the world despite, you know, the world being somewhat of a scary place. You know, encouraging leadership in every way, from the robotics competition, from, you know, the Social Justice Club. It's incredible. You guys rock.
Thank you so much. All right, back to you. Meyer School's student attendance.
Sorry about that. So I know that Middleton and McCracken presented their attendance data last board meeting. At the time, I didn't think I would be able to be here. So we scheduled mine for this board meeting. And then at the last minute, I was able to attend. But, okay, so this is Meyer School's student attendance data from trimester one. First, we have similar attendance protocols as Middleton and McCracken. For the seventh absence, the school nurse contacts home. The 10th absence, the social worker contacts home. And then after the 13th absence, I, as a principal, calls home or sends a letter. Really kind of depends on the situation and what would be best and supportive to the families. Also, students may be brought up for problem-solving at the grade-level team meeting. So just to give you an idea of how many students we have, we have 90 kindergarten students and 68 preschool students that are 73 and a half. Of course, we have additional students with NTDSI, but we track only 73 and a half students. Okay. Now, this slide shows the total absences by grade level in trimester one. And this includes both excused and unexcused absences. And this could also be just a number of students with multiple absences as well. This is the number of students that we have with five or more absences. And again, this is both excused and unexcused. So if they're excused, they may be related to COVID symptoms and kids needing to be out. And just to get, give you a better overview, this is over time or a yearly comparison. So the blue is 2019, 2020. Red is 2020, 21. And then this year is in yellow. So you can see we have very similar numbers of absences compared to our last normal year in 2019, 2020. And then, and again, this all includes excused and unexcused. All right. Now, this slide shows how many unexcused absences we have. And this is the number of absences total, not necessarily attached to one, you know, a number of students. Or it's a, it's all absences, no matter how many students. And as you can see, we actually had fewer absences, unexcused absences compared to 2019, 2020. Any questions about the absences?
Just overall, it sounds like you're not terribly concerned about the number of absences. How are you interpreting this data? What can you say about experiences?
We're not very concerned about the number of absences. You know, I think a lot of them are connected with COVID symptoms. And of course, we want families to keep students home if they do have those symptoms and come back as soon as they can based on a COVID test. So we're not terribly concerned about it. But, you know, of course, if there are students with multiple absences, you know, we are speaking with families and making sure that they're feeling supportive, supported, and that, you know, we're helping them problem-solve the issue if there's something that we can help with. Any other questions?
Just out of curiosity, just because the Middleton and McCracken report last month broke it down also by, by race. Is that data that you have access to for the future, or?
Yeah, I'm sure I can get a hold of that, sure.
And I guess then the other data, it just occurred to me when you were talking, that we didn't get for either, any of the three schools was great. And I don't know if this is possible, but breaking down the data by free and reduced lunch as well, I'd be curious. You know, I think trying to keep that as like one of our, I don't know the tech, the data terms, but like one of our standard. Variables, thank you. I'm a historian, not a social scientist. Yes, a variable that just is one of our standard variables, I think, would be helpful. But yeah, thank you so much for this. And it does look like we're kind of like on track, which is great.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great point. And definitely, we will work to include that in future presentations.
It's like a general question. Since your building is primarily the littles and like the ones, the students who can't be vaccinated, have you just noticed, like, do you deal with a high amount of students who are, who are out or in or like being a fully littles building?
Yeah, yeah, because we do have students who are unvaccinated, and they are required to quarantine as close contacts quite often. I think as we increase in the number of students being vaccinated, I think we're at 50-something at this point. So a lot of our kindergarteners and some of our preschoolers are vaccinated. It's gotten a lot better. Unfortunately, we do even have students who've had to quarantine more than once. So I think that's the challenge.
Thanks so much. Can I just say how much I love board docs? Because I was able to just very quickly go back to last month's meeting and find the reports from Middleton and McCracken. So thank you so much, Alex, for getting this up and running. Because in the past, I would not have been able to find that, so yay!
Okay, and then I, we also have some tardy numbers for you. So similar to our attendance protocols, we have our tardy protocols. So at- So at the fifth tardy, the school nurse contacts home. After the seventh, the social worker contacts home. And then the tenth tardy, I call home or send a letter. Most often, we do, for both attendance and for tardies, call home because it feels more supportive to families. We've learned, especially with our EL families, that sometimes a formal letter feels very corrective and negative. So the phone call home is just to have that personal touch and to problem solve as well. And then this is our overall tardy data by year. So in 2019, we had one hundred and ten. Last year, we also had eighty-seven. And then this year, we have ninety-four. But the teachers are also very good about following up with families as well. And then this is by grade level. We do have a higher number of tardies at the preschool level. I think with the half-day program, often, you know, that gets challenging for families. With kindergarten, we also have bus transportation, so that also helps keep us on track. And then this is the total of students with five or more tardies. So we have one in pre-K and three in kindergarten. I think that is it. Any questions about the tardies?
I have two quick questions. Thank you so much, Dr. Way, for this presentation. I appreciate always being able to see the data in comparison to our last normal, quote-unquote, year, right, 2019 to 2020, so we appreciate that. And then, quick question about the tardy protocols. I asked this to the previous principals for Middleton and McCracken as well, so same question to you. Is this tiered by any chance? Like, is it like a five-minute tardy the same thing as a ten-minute tardy? Or like, what defines a tardy?
For us, it's if any student is late for school. It is not tiered for us.
Okay, sounds good. And then also, I think it's impressive that five or more, we only have like one student on this, so that's great. So good to see that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Great, thank you. All right, moving on to item H, Student Services Update. Angela?
Yeah, thank you. So in terms of welcoming, at our January Bilingual Parent Advisory Committee meeting, we had twenty families that were in attendance. And the topic was how to support your multilingual learner at home. It was very well received. I would say at the end of the presentation, a lot of the parents shared their appreciation to our teachers for, you know, for making the time and spending time at night to kind of help them as they support their children. And then our teachers, in turn, reached out to Dr. Hightower and myself and shared how, you know, affirmed they felt and how it really did strengthen that community-to-school relationship. We have another BPAC meeting coming up on February twenty-third. And the topic of that meeting will be like how to understand your access scores in addition to other standardized test score. Samya Sharif and Hetal Tucker at Middleton will be leading that presentation. Sorry, my computer just went out. In terms of hiring and retention, we've had a number of positions we've needed to fill over the last few weeks since we returned from winter break. Some were long-term leaves and some were resignations. And so we've been working really hard to make sure that we have the best people in those positions. And that's taken a lot of, you know, interview and time, checking references and doing background checks. So we do think that we have most of our positions filled, or at least we have leads on them right now. Not all have been solidified, but I've been working hard with building principals on making sure that our students have, you know, the most highly qualified teachers in front of them. Recently, we welcomed Jamie Slobin as our long-term SLP therapist at Meyer. And then also Casey Henson, we hope to, you know, have him start this week. And then we have one additional special education teacher position at Middleton. And Nikki and I are close to closing in on a candidate for that as well. The most exciting thing for me has been the Panorama Survey that closed yesterday at three o'clock. Our Whole Child Committee will be reviewing that information on Wednesday. Our SST team will be reviewing it next week. In addition, our administrative team will review that data as well. I can just give you a little bit of a highlight in terms of some of the data that's come up, just a little bit of a teaser. Our greatest strength is our supportive relationships, our students' experience. And conversely, something that they really struggled with was feelings of positivity, which I think is understandable in a pandemic. That's all for Student Services.
I have a quick question. Thank you for all of that regarding the welcoming pillar. So it's awesome that at the BPAC meeting, we had twenty families. That's great. Do we have any intel on what types of languages were represented? Like, was it even across the board? Was it skewed on one perspective? Like, do we have any information on that? And if we don't, not a problem, but I'd love to know that.
Yeah, you just need to give me one second to pull that up. But we do take attendance and we have parents sign in. I can tell you, the biggest subgroup are our early speakers attending. But I can pull that information up for you, certainly.
Awesome, sounds good. Because I do know that, like, historically, that's been a demographic that has been a bit more challenging to engage, to see twenty families and that group and to have it represented across all languages is, I think, a pillar that's important to all of us. So that's great to hear, and I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thanks so much, Angela. All right, moving on, curriculum, instruction and assessment.
Just to give you an idea of how excited Angela was, it closed at three o'clock. I think by three oh-two, admin had data in their inbox. So that's very exciting. So on with the update from CIA. In our welcoming pillar, we've met as adults. We're going to be meeting over the next couple of weeks with Dr. Dubiel in our Individual Strands, getting, giving updates, getting feedback on our progress, and then continuing our work in our strands. In addition, we've shared some resources to help celebrate Black History Month. This is just a small part of making sure that students can see themselves across the curriculum. And so this is an ongoing project. We want to make sure that we are pausing to celebrate that. And then also letting you know that Five Essential Survey information has gone out. We're really hoping to get to that twenty percent threshold from our parents this year so that we can reap the benefits of the feedback in terms of reports from Five Essentials. So any help from the, from you is always appreciated. In hiring and retention, I see that all of you have your stress footballs with you. So we had an exciting Super Bowl party, complete with setting our goal posts for next year and also talking about the most important thing when it comes to teaching and learning, and that is building positive relationships with our students. So that was the highlight of my week so far, is seeing all of our new teachers. We, as a admin team, celebrated World Read-A-Loud Day, which we've talked about. It's my favorite day of the year. The book that, if you haven't read before, I think most students heard from me, was The Oldest Student, the story of Mary Walker, learning to read at the ripe, young age of one hundred and fourteen. So great picture book if you haven't read it. In addition, we've spent the last two early releases getting ready for our literacy audit and also just doing what we do here in District Seventy-three and a Half, and that is refining our curriculum units and preparing for that, as well as getting ready for all of the other things that happen towards the springtime in teaching and learning. And that is getting ready for IAR, yay, which is the state testing. And also, you'll have in your board packet for later, the e-learning plan. This is a three-year plan. It's a flexible plan. We worked with McMea and the admin to put together a plan that we can use in an emergency. Not, we're not moving to e-learning or anything like that coming up. So thank you for that, and I'll be happy to take questions on that. And then also, working with the Assistant Principals and Dr. Way, getting ready for summer school. We're offering four programs this year. We're going to talk more about them next month to give you a better idea. But just to give you a little preview of that, academic support, which is our typical summer school program that happens in June. EL Extended School Year, that's a new program this year for our EL students. ESY, which is through NTDSE. And then the new program, we're hoping to run with our students as an enrichment, and Language Ambassadors, but still, the name is in workshop, maybe called Cultural Ambassadors. Angela and I are still working through that with the team. And I'll take any questions.
I have a couple of things that I think are just going to be follow-up conversations. The first one is, as we look forward to summertime, one of the things I think I brought up at the beginning of the school year is being able to like partner or figure out relationships with maybe like tutoring companies or services locally that may be willing to like work with us that maybe give our parents, I don't want to say like a break or a discount in services to kind of help with like learning loss or things of that sort. Or at least being able to steer parents in a direction to maybe get some of those things if they're feeling that they need them. That might be a great helper resource. So I'd love to hear some more information about that, even if it's like a no, no one's willing to do it. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was the e-learning plan. When do we have to have that in place or sent to the, to the row for approval?
So this year, different from other years, it's sort of a rolling application process. The only difference from this year is that a lot of school districts at the end of twenty-twenty, at the end of school year 2020, as the pandemic had first started, instituted an e-learning plan under the governor's executive order. And in that, it waived some of the requirements for that, namely, a public hearing. And so when District Seventy-three and a Half went through their process in the March of 2020, they put together their e-learning plan without that public hearing and without, I believe, without engaging McMea in the process. So at the end of last school year, that plan expired because we didn't have gone through all that where, if we had, we would have had that going. So they're accepting that on an ongoing basis. I did talk to the ROE curriculum person, just to make sure we were having our ducks in a row. They said anytime that we can get it to them, they'll turn it around and then we'll be able to use it pretty regular, pretty quickly right after that. There are a couple of things that we need to do internally, like put together some schedules and things like that at each of our schools. But we'll be able to use it pretty much, hopefully, you know, knock on whatever. We won't have to use it, but it'll be good for the next three years.
Last question in regards to that. Do we have data from all of our stakeholder groups about their feelings about the e-learning plan? Or like how, like whether or not people want remote or if they want like a traditional snow day or things along those lines? Do like, we even have any data points around that?
Sure, we have a couple of things. One is at the beginning of the year, we got feedback from our stakeholders about the e-learning that they had last year. So that's incorporated into our current e-learning plan. We've since gotten feedback from McMea in multiple different ways. They've had surveys brought to their staff. And I have been meeting with their leadership group and going back and forth with their questions. And then we have been committed, as we've said in a board meeting before, that our first kind of action would be a snow day for that first one. That we believe that there's something magical about having a snow day. And so we're not totally getting rid of that. But after that first one, we do want to, you know, work together to, if it makes sense to have an e-learning day, let's have an e-learning day. This is more than just a snow day, though, because if a water main breaks at one of our buildings, we can utilize an e-learning day, short-term, at one of our buildings while the other two buildings are in session. So it is useful in a lot of different ways, not just snow days. But I think all administrators would probably say they would like a snow day too every so often. Curl up with a nice book, an extra cup of coffee. We'd love that.
Would it be a hard ask to ask McMea to let us see their data about like what their staff has picked or decided upon? Just to kind of see what the preference, so we, we're working with all of the information?
I'd be happy to ask. And when you say like, look at their data, like what they're seeing as sort of feedback on e-learning or whether they would like to use e-learning days? I just want to make sure I'm asking for the right things.
Yes, and so like if they, if they surveyed their staff saying, hey, if we have inclement weather or something, you know, would your preference be e-learning day or a snow day or whatever day? I would love to just kind of see like where they fall in the conversation.
No problem, I'll make sure I get that.
Sorry, there was one thing that I wanted to mention about the BPAC meeting that I just wanted you all to know that I forgot. We did record it separately than when the parents attended. And then we pushed it out through CSOW and on our website so that parents that weren't able to attend could also see the information that was covered. And I know Dan and Lila wrote an article, I know he won't mention it himself, but I want to brag for him, that he and Lila are now published, if you want to talk a little bit about that.
So yes, it's true. Lila and I published in Language Magazine on some practical professional development strategies that have been useful here in District Seventy-three and a Half. And so we're really excited for that, and we'll be happy to share it with the board.
Yeah, we should get it up on the website, for sure.
Yeah, definitely share that, uplift and amplify every voice, yeah.
I have a suggestion or maybe an ask. I know that we want as much participation in the Five Essentials, and I'm wondering if we can set up booths for events such as robotics and during the solo band festival that we're going to host, and even like the sports games, so that gives parents an extra opportunity and we can kind of encourage them to do it right there and then. It takes a few minutes and then we can actually have a conversation instead of just sending them an email that they may not read.
So yes, we can do that. I'm going to work with Allison on that, Dr. Acevedo. We'll get some Chromebooks out there in circulation. The other thing that we have done, which will be going out to teachers tomorrow, is a quick slideshow on things that they can share with parents at conferences. We know that conferences aren't in person. Typically, we would have those kinds of stations at conferences set up. And so we've put together some blurbs to put into the chat boxes so that parents can do it right then and there at conferences. So thank you.
Yeah, and I think, I think, like, I don't know if parents, I don't, I know I didn't get it until I was on the board, that like if we don't hit a threshold, the survey doesn't, like, we don't get that data. So I think just reminding parents that we need to hit a certain threshold in order to get that encourages them to do it. I know that's why I told my husband, so I made him do it, but it's like, we have to get it done.
They also have to do it for each school. And that's something that's been a struggle. So if you have multiple students at multiple schools and they've done it once for Meyer, they sort of think they're done. But they actually have to do it for each school.
Yeah, we, we've added that to our communication. And then I've been working with Ruth to make sure that as we go on into February and into March, we're also sharing with families where we are in relationship to that target so that they can see like, are we getting closer and making that final push? So we are on, you know, fingers crossed, but we'll get there.
If you can put that on social media, that would be awesome because it's so easy to share and then we can just kind of push people. You know, we're almost a goal, and so we can encourage them to do it, that'd be great.
No problem, I will tag you, but I do have a question. Is your birthday December twenty-seventh?
No, that is our wedding anniversary.
Oh, it's my birthday, so.
Happy belated.
We could always do like a competition between the three buildings, too. Like, what building has more percentage participation? You know, people like a competition.
So Sam and I did, Sam and I did talk about potentially.
I didn't.
Having a iPad raffle or some sort of raffle based on student or parent participation.
So one thing about our grants are that we're not allowed to like buy every parent or everybody, you know, a laptop or like a tandem bike or something like that. But we are allowed, and I've actually purchased a tandem bike with the grants before, just recently, so last year. So, but we are able to give door prizes away or raffle off one gift. So every parent can't get a Chromebook, you know, or get a laptop from the grant, but we can raffle off to one parent. And we can try to get people to participate in that Five Essential surveys, and that's what Dan and I were talking about, writing into one of our grants. And one thing that I shared with Dan is I used to kind of oversee, well, I used to, not kind of, but I used to oversee school improvement process and training of principals and all of those things with scoring on the report cards. So the easiest points to get on the rating are those Five Essential points. So that, so it's really important.
People love a raffle.
I love these ideas.
Okay, are we all set?
I just had one quick question. I was really excited about the Mentor Mentee Super Bowl and it was really creative and fun. And my understanding is this is kind of a new kind of program that we're, we're developing, right? Aimed towards staff retention. And so my question was, because I've participated in so many things that seemed well-meaning and then in the end where it was just extra work, I'm wondering if there's, you know, data, any data points or like anonymous feedback mechanisms built in so that you can get feedback and we can know that this is actually accomplishing what you guys wanted to accomplish.
So we will do a survey at the end of the year for this, but next week there are individual check-ins with Mentor and Mentee where we can definitely ask, I know it's not anonymous, but we can ask about their piece. It's not a, Mentor Mentees is not a new thing. I think we're trying to reimagine some of those things, especially in the face of COVID and to understand like how we can sort of boost morale and then work on our welcoming environment at the same time.
Sorry to bring it back to five essentials real quick. Are the results of that survey anonymous or confidential? Are there's like a difference between the two, so I'm just curious which one it was?
Yes, they are anonymous. I believe parents will have received an email for logging in. And then the student one is also anonymous and confidential. So it's just disaggregated for each school and then for the district as a whole. And then that, that information goes on the state report card in October.
Fantastic, thank you. I was also just like logistically asking because of the raffle, but that's, okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to facilities update.
Just the two short weeks that I've been here, things I noticed, the four maintenance crew people, they're very good. Very happy with them. I know Chris stepped up big when there was a gap between mine and the last director of Buildings and Grounds. Some of the equipment that we use for snow has broken down, so I know moving forward, we're going to have to look into getting new equipment. More efficient. There's only one tractor that he drives around to three different schools. Time efficiency is not really good and talking to the people who repaired it said that's not a very smart idea. The cleanliness of the buildings, I have, just to Middleton, they got to do a better job of Smith cleaning. We're looking into that. The hiring of Pure Bright was like a really good idea. Those three porters are excellent. They're always disinfecting at all three schools. I see them constantly wiping down things, disinfecting them. Moving forward, we're looking towards having, getting a contract with Honeywell for the VAS. They were out all day yesterday looking at our VAS building automated system. We're looking into having a contract with them. Every under a month coming out and doing diagnostics on our VAS. And also doing a mechanical contract with them where they would be responsible or helpful and it would be more efficient too, using them because they would know all our equipment, air handlers, the boilers, the pumps, et cetera. I think that would be a smart and efficient move, save some money there. Because then you're not having different companies look at the same equipment and different guys, service techs, doing different things. One person, a couple of people looking at the same equipment. So we're, we're going to get a report from them next week. I have a person coming out tomorrow. A vendor that we're going to go to all three buildings and look at like gym lights, outside lights. The last time I've used this person, we teamed up with ComEd to, where ComEd gives a rebate back. Switching over to LED lights, they last longer, use less energy. That I think would be a smart move and so far, so good, so far with the, it's only been two weeks bud. I'm sorry, I can't give you more, but any questions is, I'm more than welcome.
I, I just want to say welcome and also thank you so much. You know, I know in your report that you, you mentioned all the snow removal and it's been, you know, a heck of a first two weeks here. So thank you to you and to your staff. And also thank you for your straightforward, you know, facilities updates. I think, you know, I can only speak for myself, but I really appreciate when things are just spelled out and you did a great job, so thank you.
Thank you. That's usually how I do things, so.
I also want to say welcome to the district. Thank you for this very thoughtful report. Quick question about the equipment and this might be better for Sam to answer on. So is the snow equipment also outdated and will that also be purchased this summer?
So not all of the snow equipment is outdated. Ed's doing kind of an inventory right now and we're fixing what can be fixed. We actually ended up renting, oh my gosh, a Bobcat, sorry, for this last one because we didn't want to lose any of our precious parking spaces and we thought that was really important. So that's something that we might do intermittently. But at this point, we're looking at proposing the purchase of a new truck with a plow on the front of it. We have one of our trucks, I think I mentioned this in the last board meeting, it's a little rough. And so those are the kind of things we're starting to look at.
Yeah, no, I remember that. That was actually really descriptive, stuff we stayed in mind. And yeah, I asked because it, it just thoughtfully like, why would we purchase snow equipment in the summer? Unless budgeting reasons like the only reason, right? Like it would make sense to purchase it now if the snow is happening now, like is what my thought was. So is that the main reason? Oh, fair, fair, fair. Oh, smart, smart. Okay, fantastic, thank you and welcome.
I just had one question. Just curious, I, I, and I know Nikki probably has brought this up already, but like any, looking at the lunchroom table issue and the gym at Middleton, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, so I have, Ed has only been here two weeks, but he's definitely been part of the conversation around that. So there's a meeting scheduled for next week where Ed's going to be present, myself. Principal Cameron will be there and Dr. Hightower and Erin, our architect. So we became aware that there was already some plans in place for some expansions and some different ideas. And so he's going to bring to the table at that meeting his initial thoughts that would include those previous ideas, some new ideas and some kind of innovative out there ideas. And we're just going to start with the ideas as an administrative team. You know, every, kind of the most important aspect is to decide, you know, how we want to move forward and that's where we're starting.
Thanks and welcome again. Okay, yes, now it's your turn.
I just had a quick question or comment here. A few board meetings ago, I mentioned that maybe we should discuss with the village regarding like the issues that we're having with ComEd, I think it was, with the power outages. And I'm wondering if that's something I could just kind of remind us to do and just connect with them and see if, who's actually responsible for what?
I know, I know Erin, when we met with Erin a week or two ago, I guess in the, this upcoming construction is supposed to be generators. So we're working on that. I could always reach out to ComEd and, because I guess it's pretty common over at Middleton? Or is it common at all three schools? Okay, so we can always, I could always call up ComEd and find out what's going on. But I was surprised when I came here that there was no generator at any of the schools.
Yeah, and you know, just to kind of see if there is an infrastructure issue that the village can actually be responsible for? Or if that's something that just all falls on ComEd?
I think we'll work together, the business office and Buildings and Grounds, and we'll definitely follow up. So I think in the next board meeting, we could add that as an item that we can update you on. Also, we did add, like Ed was saying, to the scope of the fiscal year 22 renovations, we did add generators as well as the fire panel work. So those things should assist us as well.
Vicki, are you also concerned about the outages that we're having within the community that are nearby to the school when you're thinking about the infrastructure and ComEd?
Well, we did have to purchase a generator, but it is because we live right down the street from Middleton and it's non-stop. So I can't imagine the frustration from Middleton. So it makes me kind of wonder if there's an infrastructure issue that's bigger than just, than maybe somebody else can kind of take on.
I asked because Ed wouldn't have the historical knowledge about that. So I wanted to make sure if he understood that it's not just happening at Middleton. There are some outages that are happening within the community close to Middleton.
Except my house.
They're very, very costly and it is, it's extremely frustrating.
But I think your ask from a community perspective is, is this something that the village can take on versus it costing taxpayer money?
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you. We're next going to move to item L, the financial update. I lied, the technology update, item K.
So just a couple of quick updates. The first is that our department continues to work with the business office on our cybersecurity plan. We did in-state two-step verification or multi-factor authentication just this past week on Monday. We put that into effect at 3:00 PM and then our department also held office hours today from 2:30 to 4 o'clock during the in-service time for anyone who needed assistance with that. It's going to be a really critical part of our cybersecurity plan and making sure that everyone is accessing only their accounts and only they are accessing their accounts. That applies only to teachers, it does not apply to student accounts. The second is an E-rate update, so that verbiage is much the same as it was last time. The only difference is that we recently submitted our Form 470, so we are open to bid. We will be taking potential vendors through a walkthrough of our buildings this Thursday so that they can see all of our server rooms and closets and really get an idea of the infrastructure that needs to be updated so that we can get proposals coming in soon. Our third point is in reference to our new printing company. So thank you for the support in letting us work with Gordon Fleisch. They've already come through, done a full walkthrough in all of our buildings with myself and with our network manager, Derek Bowery. And they have tagged all of our printers and copiers so that we can finally get reliable toner and copier cartridges. And then our final was a piggyback off of Nancy's update earlier about the Buzzbot Robotics. We were so proud of our students. It was held at Lincoln Junior High. We will be hosting the next competition, which will be on March 10th and will be at McCracken. And for our first competition out of the gate, we were so proud that they were two of the top eight teams. So we are looking forward to continuing that work and excited to see where we land at the next competition.
I have a quick question. First, yes, major congrats to Buzzbot Robotics and then also congrats to the tech department for implementing cybersecurity plans. I just have a quick question about that. I think the two-step verification is awesome and it's a great step forward. But do we have any historical, I guess, aspects of phishing emails per se? And is there any like anti-spam protection that we've been able to put in place, especially being a smaller district? Want to make sure sensitive information isn't being passed around?
It's a really good question. So we have in the past done professional development around this and speaking with some of the other directors in the area recently, they felt that it was maybe not the best time to impose on teachers a fake phishing ad. And we don't want to add more stress to our teachers. We wouldn't want for them to, at this juncture in the year or during this year, feel like we're trying to catch them in anything. So we feel that education is the best first step and that's absolutely something we would want to look into in the future when we know that everyone is feeling a little bit more emotionally stable and safe in our building.
Oh, absolutely agree with that, yeah, sounds good. Just wanted to make sure we were being proactive about that too, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item L, financial update, Sam?
So I'll also add a little bit about the cybersecurity. One of the things in the business office we're doing is working to, to kind of tighten up our procedures around direct deposits. So that if we get like an email with somebody requesting a direct deposit, we don't just look at that and say, okay, or any bank account information. We actually have a verbal check now where we need to call and have a confirmation, not just an email from your email, even though it seems like it would be always from you. It's not necessarily the case, so those are one of the steps we're taking in addition to be proactive. Going straight into the financial update, it's all in your board packet. The budget right now, as you can see, this is based on our last budget. This, our expenditures, we're at almost 80% and so thank you guys for approving the budgets today, so. But I will say the 80% that we're almost at included all of our encumbrances around payroll and benefits, which is another huge portion. So it's not quite as bad as it might look on the paper here. Our summer school rates, I'll just go straight into that. Summer school rates are up for board approval today. We've actually proposed to do the same thing as last year, which is not to increase the summer school, not to impose summer school rates on our parents at all. In working with Mr. Schwartz, one of the things we discussed right off the bat was the need to work with remediating students who have been out of school because of COVID for so long and how do we address that learning loss? One of the ideas is through summer school and how do we encourage more people to participate in summer school and then burden them with a fee that they might not be able to afford? So in order to create more equity and increase more access for everybody, that is the suggestion that we've made. Transportation, so one thing I want to talk about is CPI. As far as our transportation rates go, traditionally, we increase all of the rates here in the district by CPI every year. CPI right now in January just came out at 7%, very high. Good news is it is expected to go back down and to go down pretty drastically in the future. And with that in mind, we did not feel comfortable raising the rates or suggesting to raise the rates for transportation, that in full 7% because we felt that it would impose upon our families an undue hardship. And so what we've decided to do instead is just to deal with half of that, 3.5%, which will probably be more in alignment with previous CPIs and with hopefully what's coming up for CPI. And so also that would mean no more than $5 would be raised on any one fee. So they're nominal, they're very small raises. The, it is, I will say that we go out for bid for transportation services for next year, so we don't really know what our rates will be, but these decisions were made to the best of our ability at this time. Other rates, as far as the lunch fees, the instructional fees and the enrichment rates, there, last year they were approved in May, I believe. Sometimes in the past they were done in March or as early as February this board meeting. We've decided to wait just to give us a little bit more time. One of the things that's going on right now amongst all of the neighboring districts is the business managers have created sort of a shared document for these fees so we can really look at what everybody is charging and be in alignment with everybody else. And so we would expect that we'll be proposing those rates for our next board meeting in March. Annual and quarterly reporting and filings. The annual affidavit for exempt property was filed. We have to do that every year and essentially we are properly exempt from taxes. See what else? Our quarterly federal tax returns, our 941s have all been filed. Our quarterly state tax returns have all been filed. And our Illinois Department of Employment and Security quarterly reports have been filed. All of our payments have been made and our wage and tax statements on January 24th were sent to all employees in the mail. We've had a couple of people who did not receive them and we've been working with them to either reprint them, have them pick them up and just confirm if there was maybe an address issue or some of the times there's an actual issue with the post office. Also working with our staff to help them to access the employee portal through iVision's where their W2s are posted and they can print them and sometimes that's just a lot more easy for them. Grant reporting, I will say this, we are up to date on all of our grant reporting. There are a couple of exceptions. So every time we do what's called an expenditure report, that is where we report what we spent and then we get those payments, those disbursements from the Illinois State Board of Education. There is also what's called a periodic report associated with it due. So we have recently been informed that there's a couple from 2019 and 2000, early 2020 that were never completed and I'll be working over the next week to complete those. But all of our current year grants are completely accurate, they're in alignment with what we're actually spending. And I will say that we are finally starting to really get in some big bucks from those, which feels really good in the business office to see. And that's it for the financial update. I think I'm next too, though.
Okay, yeah, go right ahead.
And then I can maybe take questions together. So this is also in your packet and the board packet, I won't belabel it and go into, you know, this huge thing about it. It's the annual financial information report. This is actually completed annually in, in collaboration with our financial advisors who are currently Raymond James and Associates. And so this was sent over and it was completed with information that we provided and information from our audit and our audits over time. So you'll see in here a schedule of our debt that we still owe, what has been paid. You'll see trends for our fund balances, trends for our revenues and expenditures. You'll see trends for our fund balances, trends for our revenues and expenditures over a period of time. And really it just kind of gives a long-range picture of the district financially. And normally we just include this for the board's information.
Any questions?
I have a quick question about the property values and EAV. I'm not super well-versed on this, but I'm wondering if the school business officers have discussed kind of like what they might expect this year since property values have really like gone a little bit haywire with COVID. Are they expecting?
Yeah, well, the big thing to know is that CPI will affect next year's levy, but we're only, we're capped at 5%. So while we may have, and this kind of goes back to your question earlier about the revenues, right? We do expect that we're going to have higher expenses and actually lower revenues in the next couple of years, especially next year. And so these conversations are already taking place. And we have, some of the business managers, myself, we have already started to have the conversations around property values next year and EAV. And so I do believe that the inflation that kind of happened in 2009 where then there was that drop-off, I think that that was really critical for the way that people are perceiving what's happening now because the thought is not to let that happen now. So there are already banks out there who are starting to deny some of these loans for people who are bidding way, way over the home's value and then the banks are saying, well, prove to us why this home is worth so much. So we don't, we don't think that it's going to balloon like it did in the past and that's important to know. And I think I got the next one too, so. Okay, I was looking at your, all right, so 2022 Property Tax Relief Grant. This was in your packet. Unfortunately, we were not approved for the grant. I will say that they have the top 50 schools on the list who are, we were, I think, about 65. The year that we did not apply for the grant last year, we applied for the grant the previous year and when we, that was 2020. That was the first year that the grant was out there. So we kind of got bumped up to that 50 and we got very lucky that year because there were people who didn't, there were school districts who didn't know about the grant, about the benefits of the grant and didn't apply for it. But unfortunately this year that didn't happen. That's all.
I just want to say, this isn't about any of the reports you just gave. I just want to say that your accounts payable report is so much easier to read. So much better organized, much easier to read.
Well, I will have to say this. I've been working really hard with my team in the business office and Karen has been really monumental. So she helped a lot with accounts payable over the last week and we did a lot together to make sure that everything was clear. So I think, I think we have to give some kudos to Karen.
Yeah, it's way more transparent and it's really easy to see how, where we're spending and what we're spending it on, so thank you very much.
And one of the big differences too now in the way we're doing it is everything is reviewed by the business office prior to being submitted to the board packet. So everything is signed off on and we're able to comb through everything to make sure there's no duplicate payments or anything that we wouldn't expect on the payables.
All right. Okay, so moving on. Thank you so much for all of that. Item O, Classified Staff Member Union Update. I will just say we're almost there. We're so close. We have negotiations set for the end of this month, I think the 28th. And so we're hoping that, that we're, we're, we're there. It's going well. It's just a matter of scheduling everybody, finding a date that everybody can actually meet is really what's taking the time. So we put out, I don't know, four dates and there was only one date that worked for everybody. So we're meeting at the end of this month and we look forward to that. Any future possible agenda items? Item P.
I'm going to be repetitive, but I'm wondering if we can put the safety audit idea on a future discussion item.
Okay. So after looking at the, the accounts payable, which is much easier to read now, I just, I would love, and this doesn't necessarily have to be for the next meeting because Ed just started and this is maybe a topic for our finance committee. But I'd be curious about two things, thinking about the environment. One is the possibility of solar panels as a way to offset some of our electricity costs for, at least for McCracken and Meyer. I mean, I'm hoping that Middleton is a project unto itself, so for McCracken and Meyer, what would be the possibility of that? And two, I think we should compost in our district and I'd be curious, there's, it's, I've been listening to a lot of different stuff about how much composting can diminish our carbon footprint and emissions and California is moving to mandate that everybody compost, so I'm just curious what the possibilities are. There's one group, we compost in our house, and so I was just kind of curious about if that group, you know, contracted with schools to do it. So what the possibilities would be and thinking that it might be a fun project also for the kids to work on in the social justice group. So just for future items, things to explore.
So there is one thing with that. The Cook County Commissioner's Office right now, they are giving out a ton of funds around solar panels, but it has to do with working with students and I know middle school students are eligible, so that might be something that I would, Ed and I could look into and we can look into with Allison to see how we could incorporate that and grab some of that free money.
Thank you. Any other items for the agenda? Okay, moving right along. Section seven, Committee Reports, 7A Board Equity Committee. Kelly?
I don't really have anything to report this month. It's been a busy month. But sure, do you have anything to add before I ask a question? The only question I think I wanted to ask is to put a meeting on the calendar to follow up after you guys have your conversation with Dr. Dubiel and to give us an update on where kind of things are with Dell and Dr. Dubiel and all those kind of things. That's really it, sorry.
No need to apologize. Item B, Board Policy Committee. We just got an email yesterday or today. We'll be scheduling for Doodle to schedule a board policy committee meeting because we now have, the press packet has come in. So there will be upcoming reviews of policies soon. Item C, Ed Redd. Ashley?
Ed Redd has a virtual meeting this Friday that I'll be attending. We'll be hearing a presentation from Representative Didich about TIP reform. This has been an issue and hotly talked about and debated for decades now. So it looks like they're probably going to finally reform TIPS so that they have a shorter lifespan from 25 years, 15 years. There's more stringent requirements around what blighted, a blighted area actually means. And also any new TIP, any government agency or body forming a new TIP would be forced to, were required to enter into intergovernmental agreement with any entities there. So I'll let you know how the Friday meeting goes. In December, there was a discussion with Cook County Assessor Fitzcagney. Samantha, you may be interested in this. There's discussion about a dashboard being developed for school districts for our financial needs and our projection needs. So any, you know, new information on that, I'll let you know and send it your way.
Thank you. Carla in TSC?
Yes, light meeting. Malloy student won the Morton Grove Fire Safety Poster Contest, so congratulations to that student. Our strategic plan meeting, we had to move it from this past Saturday to a date to be determined. We talked about the fiscal year allocations finalized for IDEA grants and construction update. There are also nine new students enrolled since November. That is it.
Thank you so much. President Karen, PTO report.
I have the green light to go. Thank you all for letting me be here. Thank you for letting me speak at 9:30 instead of 11:30. I appreciate it. Sorry, throwback to last month. For those watching who missed it. The PTO met the week after your board meeting last month. Some of the things that we discussed were what kinds of events we could potentially do in the era of COVID, the great buzzword of 2019, 2020, 2021, every year. So we are looking at, we also looked at partnerships that we have in the community already with caring hearts and how we could potentially help them with things and partner with them. Another group that was at the meeting were parents who are involved in the gardening groups. And so we started talking through the idea of doing some Earth Day collaborations with the gardens, getting the PTO kind of helping get parents and kids out, doing things on the grounds. I think we'll talk with, you know, Ed and Dr. Hightower about the idea of ways that we could kind of come together and, you know, around that week or a couple of weeks around that time in April. Other ideas that we had included looking into outdoor drive-up movie nights at the different locations and potentially having kind of, once it's, once there's not snow on the ground, I mean, it doesn't sound fun right now, but in the spring, it sounds like a fun idea. And so we're looking at potentially putting together some of those things coming into the spring. So those are some of the things that we're looking forward to. And then we also started brainstorming some ideas for teacher and staff appreciation when we get there. It's kind of down the road. But we still love you guys now, but we're looking for that, you know, that particular week when we'll be doing it. So those are some of the things that we are working on. We did have more parents who showed up at this last meeting. We're going to have another meeting in the next two weeks because I'm just going to be honest, I am the worst at scheduling meetings. Although I'm listening to this meeting tonight where people are trying to figure out scheduling meetings and maybe I'm not the worst, but I'm really not good at it. And so I'm going to try to get one out there and then we're going to push it out. I'm going to try to get paper into backpacks this time along with social media. And so those are some of the things that we're going to do heading into this next meeting. But we're going to continue to try to build in the PTO. So that's where we're at. Any questions for me? Except for you. Anyone else? I'm just kidding, the question, go ahead.
Non-parent, yeah, yeah, sorry. Sorry, I know.
I'm totally kidding, go ahead.
I know, it's actually kind of funny, my bad.
It's not your bad.
Quick question about the PTO. One, how do I get, no kidding. So in terms of just this year, under your leadership especially, what would you say are like the main goals that us as board members can be helped on? But is it like fundraising this year? Is it community development? Like what would you say is like the main purpose for this year? Understanding it's still like a hybrid COVID year and like it's still challenging.
It's still, it's still a COVID year, it's not, it's, yeah. But I think really like my goal this year is to get more people involved. We have money we want to spend. We have things we want to do. The reality is, is we can't do a lot. We can, you know, do some nice things. We can give some gift bags. We can not touch each other and not be near each other. And so these are the things that we have this year, but what I do want to see is, is more, more parents finding out about it, more parents coming to the Zoom meetings. We found that that is kind of our best forum, I think, at this point. And so we're going to continue with that forum. But really if you guys can come to those meetings, you can show up to the PTO meetings. I'd love to see you there. I come to yours. And so, you know, I'm just saying. And you can encourage other parents to show up at those meetings too through your social media. I know you're all out there. I see you on social media. You can, you can put it out there. So these are the things that you could do to help me. But the goal is to engage all the different communities of parents and teachers to see if we can get more of a momentum involvement.
That's awesome. And that's exactly why I asked. I'd love to support.
And you're, you're allowed to be part of it.
I would love to be like a community liaison. Yeah, and like outreach sounds like the main thing to be helped on. So that sounds good and.
I know you're good at that, so, you know, you can do that.
All over it.
You're all over it, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Going, going, go.
Thank you so much, Karen. Finance Committee update. So as I plugged earlier, we sent out a postcard for all those out there. So every, every address in 73 and a half should have gotten a postcard. We hope we'll get, we've gotten some applications. We encourage more applications. We're looking forward to launching the finance committee.
Emily, one question that I had received from some community members was how big of a time commitment it is? Can you give any of that detail?
So, you know, the, the document said, you know, we'll have a monthly meeting. It's a new committee. So my feeling is it's, it's, you know, the initial commitment is like once a month plus like read your email. But, you know, if there is like a hot issue, you know, then it's going to increase. And then, but I think, you know, the base commitment is, you know, potential phone calls, reading your email and a monthly meeting that will not go till 11:30 at night. But, yeah, and then if we, you know, end up doing something big as a district that requires a lot of input, then obviously that would take maybe some more time.
Okay, so moving on, new business. I need a motion to approve the personnel report.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report.
Motion made by member Arias, seconded by member Nelson.
Member Moy Wooton?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger? Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Arias? Yes. Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
The motion to approve the personnel report has passed. I now need a motion to approve the Administrator Employment Contract for Director of Buildings and Grounds Edward Kerrigan.
I'll make a motion to approve the Administrator Employment Contract for Director of Buildings and Grounds Edward Kerrigan.
Second. I think we can just, you know, he already started. We're stuck now. So we'll call a roll. Sorry, motion made by Arias, seconded by Nelson.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Arias?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger? Member Moy Wooton? Member Jacob?
Yes.
The motion to approve the Administrator Employment Contract for Director of Buildings and Grounds Edward Kerrigan has passed. Welcome aboard. I need a motion to approve liability insurance contract renewal with SSCIP for 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the liability insurance contract renewal with SSCIP for 2022.
Second.
Motion made by member Nelson, I'm pretty sure, seconded by member Amawala. Member Arias made the motion. Any comment, questions? You want to tell us anything about this?
It's just our liability insurance and I talked about it in our last board meeting. It went up about, I think, I put it in the memo, it was like a little bit over 10%. So the cyber liability was excluded from that. Our, it was approximately 60, I think 2,000 was our entire premium and then the cyber insurance is 13,000 additional.
Okay, any questions? Call the roll.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger? Member Moy Wooton? Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Arias?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
The motion to approve the liability insurance contract renewal with SSCIP for 2022 passes. Thank you very much. I need a motion to award the contract for fiscal year 2022 renovations project to Paul Borg Construction Company.
I'll make a motion to award the contract for fiscal year 22 renovations project to Paul Borg Construction Company.
Second. Motion made by member Arias, seconded by member Nelson. I think we already heard a bunch about this, so call the roll.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Arias?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Moy Wooton?
Yes.
The motion to approve the contract for. The motion to approve the contract for FY 2022 renovations project to Paul Borg Construction Company passes. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the E-Learning Plan for 2022-2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the E-Learning Plan for 2022 to 2025.
Second.
Motion made by member Arias, seconded by member Amawala. Any questions about this? Call the roll.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Arias?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Moy Wooton?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
The motion to approve the E-Learning Plan for 22-25 has passed. I need a motion to approve the resolution to, no. Okay. Uh, motion to approve the resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2022 amended budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2022 amended budget.
Motion made by member Arias, seconded by member Wolfinger.
Member Arias?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Moy Wooton?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger? Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
The motion to approve the resolution to adopt the fiscal year twenty-two amended budget passes. I need a motion to approve the student bus transportation fees for school year twenty-two, twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve student bus transportation fees for school year 2022, 2023.
Second.
Motion made by member Arias, seconded by member Amawala.
I have a question about this. Um, I, so this year we didn't, no one paid for, like, families didn't pay for bus transportation, correct? We didn't charge. They did or they did not?
They did, as far as I know, Karen, am I correct? Yes. So as far as I know, they did. What we did not charge for was summer school fees.
Okay. But lunch is what we're not paying for.
Right, because there's a waiver, federal waiver right now, we're on a different program.
I knew there was something we didn't pay. I was about to be really mad. Cause I definitely paid. I, I'm sorry, it's late. I just wanted to, okay. So this is, well, the continuation.
And now that the personnel report is, um, is approved, I will say that on the personnel report was a, a position change for Mrs. Hayes to Coordinator of Business Service or Coordinator of, uh, Operational Services, which is includes transportation direction and food, but food services. So we ask you, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions about this? No, okay.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Arias?
Yes.
Member Moy Wooton?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger? Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
The motion to approve the student bus transportation fees for school year twenty-two, twenty-three passes. Need a motion to approve summer school fees for summer 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve summer school fees for summer 2022.
That is, that totally threw me for a loop. Motion made by member Amawala and seconded by member Jacob, I think. Um, oh, that would be helpful. Any questions about this? Okay, just call the roll.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger? Member Moy Wooton? Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Arias?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes. The motion to approve summer school fees for summer 2022 passes. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda rules, there is no discussion about the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion made by member Arias, seconded by member Moy Wooton.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Arias?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger? Member Moy Wooton?
The motion to approve the consent agenda passes. Uh, we now have an opportunity for public comments. Does anybody want to make a public comment?
Hi, Emily Wigman. Um, so just a couple of things, since we have a new Buildings and Grounds person, I just thought I would put this out there that the fence around the Gilbert Garden needs some help. There's a couple of holes in it. Um, also, I know it's happened twice where there was a bus issue, but there was this, an email sent out about having your child wait outside for the bus and it was on a day that you wouldn't send the kids to outdoor recess. So for me, I find that a little concerning, um, when it was like a twenty-minute wait for the bus. So if you're not gonna send them outside for recess, I probably wouldn't send an email saying please wait for the bus outside for twenty minutes. Um, also, I love getting emails from the district, but I don't love getting them on Friday afternoon, right before everyone leaves. If we could figure out a way to send them earlier in the day or wait till Monday so that if you had questions or concerns, you could call after the email versus having to wait the whole weekend. And just a reminder about Coca-Cola gives, I know I said this a couple of years ago, but like the red bottle, the caps of the, um, Coca-Cola bottle caps, um, have a number on the lid and every time you enter that onto the Coca-Cola gives, gives website, it goes, um, you get five cents towards the school that you select on there. So if you save all your red caps and then enter them, we'll be sending the school just a little bit of extra money, which I think is always helpful. So that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Karen?
Okay, the green light's already on. Um, so I had two things that came up that I just wanted to bring up at the end of the meeting for you. Um, one is you mentioned the Five Essential Survey. As the PTO president, I would love to help you with that. Um, I don't know if it's out on social media yet, I'll be honest, I haven't been out on social media like in the last week or so. Um, but if there are things that are out there, we would love to help push that. So I don't know if they're out there yet, but when they are, if, um, somebody could give the PTO a heads up, we'll continue to try to push those things forward as well. Um, second, I believe it was in Nancy's report, she mentioned, um, the booth that is upstairs where the students have been, um, casting. I would suggest as board members that you take a walk upstairs and see how amazing that is and what has been done because it's here and it's just steps away. So that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? All right, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Are we adjourning to closed session again, Emily? I'll make a motion.
No, I want to say it. I need a motion to approve, to adjourn to closed session for the following purposes. To discuss information related to the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employee.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees.
Motion made by member Arias, I have no idea who seconded it. Uh, member Wolfinger? Uh, call the roll.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Arias?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Moy Wooton?
The motion passes and just to be clear, you guys don't all have to stick around to wait for us to get through that and then close the official meeting. You get to go home. We just don't get to go home. All right, go back to the other room now.